I think we're ready to go. I'm excited we're ready. It is my pleasure to call to order the City of Marshall Budget Workshop and Special City Council Meeting for Tuesday, May 6th. Thank you all, staff, for the monumental network that takes us to this together. Thank you to our staff and guests who were just here to participate. We appreciate you. That said, we will kick off with an indication led by Ms. Matt, Ms. Madd, called about the Pledge of Allegiance and the Easability Pledge. I invite you to stand at great faith and pray.
Let's pray. Hallelujah, blessed God, Father, and Son, and God, Father, thank you for this beautiful day that you've allowed us to gather and sing, to do the business of the city of Harpsville, that all else are not. Father, thank you for your continued divine protection over the city of Harpsville. And Lord, we ask you in the name of Jesus that you continue to protect us, continue to help us build Harpsville out to where it would serve every citizen, every service, and every section. Father, we ask you that you let Harpsville grow forward and grow forward together. As we do work in this project workshop meeting, let us be mindful of those citizens' jobs and be attentive, and help us use it to the best use of all of the city of Harpsville. Please, now, the rest of the rest of the men and women of Jesus Christ, we do pray.
You also pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, and under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Finished with the Easability Pledge. I'll start that, too.
I pledge to build a stronger and more prosperous community by advocating for civil engagement, respecting others' privacy laws, and finding solutions for the better of the city or town.
And one last thing, it is municipal corpse week, everybody, and the, our clerk and former clerk have a whole lot to do with making this meeting happen, so let's get it a little relative. I don't know how early you were here this morning, but she was a lot earlier than I was, so I appreciate, appreciate what you do to, to keep us on track and make these meetings happen. That said, presentationally, we have a guest that you would like to, we're standing right here, I guess?
Yeah, that way you're on camera. Let's see what you've got.
Thank you, thank you, Casey. First of all, thank y'all for letting me come back. I say that because I've been here twice before. We're gonna do it a little different today. I've abbreviated a good bit of this PowerPoint to be more specific to our path law. I think that's important. We're far enough along now. We're beyond being embryonic, let me say that. We're at the point now where I want to show you where we've been, where we are, and where we want to go, and more importantly, how we're gonna get there. So, that being said, we started out, the Center Theater, with this renovation project, and I learned a long time ago, part of intelligence is knowing what you don't know. So, if you look at this committee structure that we put together, these are all highly credible people. Their skill sets are vast, and they all bring a passion to what we're doing, and that's, that's what's so important. But anyway, that's what that was. This is our mission statement. It's pretty nebulous. You've seen that probably before. Most, most mission statements are pretty general. They don't give a lot of detail, but that's basically what that is. But we believe in that. We have, we operate with two principles. The one is, we don't run, we walk with a purpose. And the second, it's amazing what you can get done, and I want to give you this credit for that. So, we, we believe in that. Thank you. This is, this is where we were. This theater was underwater, literally. You can see the damage from the walls. This was, this was the entrance of the atrium when you come into the theater, before we started renovation. That's what it looks like today. We finished it. It's done. Long and saucy. We built it as waterproof. One of the things I will comment on, it took fourteen months to waterproof this building. We had no clue what it was involved. When we first started, we thought, oh, new membrane discovers on the roof, we're gonna do it. No. We replaced every mortar joint in the bricks on that building outside and sealed it, and that's why it's waterproof today. And we pared off. These are, these are just some old photographs we put in the atrium. We had them blown up for the purpose of fitness and sponsor.
This is what's first or second arc of that.
That is, that is right.
Yes, yes. That was Kim on that one side of it. But yeah, I think that's Kim over on the right.
The horse is named for Billy. Billy the man?
Yeah, yeah. That chandelier was given by a friend of mine. That came, that's custom made. It's Art Deco chandelier. It came from the West Coast. And that's, that's in the atrium. It was gray to red. It was cool. That's, just to make a, make a point on that, that was about a $25,000 gift. So, that was, that's pretty generous on this part. This is our seating model. These are, these are the seats. Our seats, when we replace them, will be about $270,000. And we sold, purchased eighty of them, I think, now. And so, eighty of them have been bought by, by citizens. And then, you can buy one if you want to. But anyway, that's, that's a little seating model right there. That's just a picture of the inside of the main auditorium. I think it's, what, thirty-two feet high? Thirty-two feet high. It's all painted. And we actually went back with all of the original colors. We did some pulls and chips off the wall. Charlotte, me, and Fidda Colmash. Those are the original colors to the theater. So, we're maintaining integrity at Art Deco. These are some of the things we've done in twenty-four. This is kind of where we are today. We put in new lighting, the building waterproof. We've got the main auditorium painted and fixed and ready for seating. We put in a new, new electricity. That's kind of a discovery. It cost about a hundred and forty grand to get the wiring back where it needed. They were mistaken. Put in a new HVAC system, and we've got a new sound system, state-of-the-art sound system in there now. So, we're getting there. We're just off where we need to go, but we're slowly but surely getting there. This is, this is the lighting cost. This is what it's cost us to put the new lighting in. It's about a hundred and eleven, twelve thousand dollars. These are all light fixtures that our decorating committee, you saw on that first slide. I think it's Veronica, Beshiri, Jennifer, and Sherry West. They selected all of these from Art Deco. This is the model analysis, what we're doing. This business model makes the theater positive on cash flow when we utilize it. Before, it was kind of iffy. We're changing it over. This is, this is kind of a projection on cost. I'm gonna give you an example. We know that we've got nine hundred seats. We increased the seats from eight forty-seven up to nine hundred. That's a lot of seats. There's nothing in the PD that's really gonna compete with us on seating capacity. And your seating capacity is your revenue, but we know it's gonna be hard to sell nine hundred seats. That's a lot of seats. If we bring in big events, we gotta have twelve anchor events a year. Those twelve events, they, they could cost us anywhere from forty to sixty thousand to get up here, but that's gonna be big-name entertainment, and that's what's gonna sell out the capacity of the theater. We're gonna do that twelve times a year. And if you look at that business model, we're safe. It's like a contingency plan. If you look, I'm saying, we're not gonna sell out that theater every time. We're gonna sell it at sixty percent, which would be five hundred and forty seats. And if we have an average ticket price of sixty-two fifty, which is low for a $50,000 act, we're gonna make almost $17,000 a month for each event that we do. So, that business model tells me the theater's gonna be sustainable. We've done our math on it. We know how it's gonna work. We just got to get to the point where we can open the doors, because right now, the theater's been closed two and a half years. I mean, that, it, time has gone by pretty quick, but we've literally been closed for two and a half years. And we don't make a dime under the pledge, yes.
Yes. I remember when Ms. Rutherford Thomas reached out to the N double A C P event at the theater. They had Jared Ruffler one year. He just passed away this year.
The singer.
Yes. And it was a soul, it was a soul that bit. And I wanted to ask, do you have a lineup right now of people that you're trying to find to do events? Or are you working with other groups to get a break?
That's a great question, and in fact, we do. We have, we know the historical events that they committed to come back and we reopen. But we're looking beyond that. We're looking for, there's, there's a group called TNT. It's the Temptations and the Thompies. Incredible performance. I saw them in the gym. That's about eighty grand to bring them in, but if we could sell the theater out, we can pay for it. It's not a big deal. To me, that is more important than, than making a lot of money off of the show. But we, yes, we are. We're looking, I've got some, we've got some connections with some of our committee people to go to, to get maybe any grant of their skill, country stars out of national. So, we, we look at the absolute, and we will actually be working, it's good with agency, to help us guide us through that. But your point, these events, most of them have to be built in here out there, and you got to pay them before they, they come to. So, there's, there's a lot of noise in all of that. Ambitions are good. There's some reality, the reality checks in there, too, but that's a great point.
And the reason I brought that, because a lot of times I've had, decided to have this in more because I have had vendors that actually come in, come out of town and be here, like with Angstrom Holiday or something like that. And they just, you know, were so enthused about being able to see a star like that.
We look, I've been watching, I've been following the town shooting, so I'm, a lot of the big-time acts that we did fifteen years ago, they're looking to come to smaller venues. Small venues, they know, bring smaller dollars to them, so that puts them right in our wheelhouse. With nine hundred seats, you know, we can, we can have a pretty good, anybody who pays a hundred dollars a seat can see a star, I mean, a real star. So, but that's a great point, but we're working on that. That's, we got, absolutely. Thank you. But this is kind of the business model around events, is we bring them in. This is, this is kind of where we need to go financially. Everything that's highlighted is done and completed. An important part of this is, we've got a committee that's very strong in finances. We've got the right people in there to do that. We don't owe a dime. Everything we've done is paid, and we've got a bank to balance this pretty healthy. So, now, that bank balance we speak of, I think it's like two and four of Ken, is that right? Something like that. But Ken watches our money like a officer. They, they won't know the spendable that they can, but that money's contingency money. We're not, we're not spending it on crazy things. We have to, because we have to operate the theater. It's, it's cost-intensive to operate, even though it's, it's not open for, for business. There's still an operational cost associated with it. So, we watch it very carefully, but, but I think the most important thing is, we don't owe a thing. Everything we've done is paid. So, I think that gives a lot of credibility to our management and responsibility. This is kind of a summary of who has contributed so far, and these are some big ones. We spent 1.6 billion dollars already, and these are contributors. If you go back, go back one, sure, I did look at that, the center stage, oversight, decorating, media ideation, and these, we consolidated a lot of that now. We pared back a little bit, but we've got a real strong committee structure now. We begin to do some subcommittee work out of that group, like we're talking to Nancy B., she's our brand expert now. She's, she's managing all the grants. So, that's the kind of direction we're going in here. Thank you. This is the path forward. We're targeting to be open for business and have a, have a opening act on March 31st of '26. Now, I think we could do it a little sooner, but that's, that's a long day if we could, you know, get it going. I think we can do that pretty easily. I'm staying pretty close to North Industrial, who's gonna do all our interior work, and they're all scared. We know exactly how much we're gonna have to pay them every month based on the budget for construction. It's already outlined. So, that part has been taken care of. We've already got a grand opening act. I met with, you've probably heard of him. His name is Jacob Will, international opera singer. He spends a lot of time, his life in Switzerland, but I had lunch with him in Colombia, and he's committed to come back. And that goes back to our mission statement about he's a local, local people. He's from Harpsville. So, all that's kind of lining up right now for us, but he can be our opening act. We've got a long day orchestra that'll be supporting him on stage, and so this could be, this could be a big deal. And we have, we hope to have a gala, kind of a grand opening, drop-in party. We have to go. There's gonna come out before us. South Carolina State Arts Commission's been involved in, in some of our committees, so this could be a big deal. Projected time for North Industrial to finish, once we start, will be about seven months. He said they could do it in six, but I know how delays happen, so we're probably looking at about seven. But the things that we've got to do, and we've got to do these in sequence. The seats will be the very last thing to go in, believe it or not, but that's because, once the demolition inside starts, we don't want to get them in and give them dirty. So, we've got the seats, that we're putting all new windows in, and elevators going in. Office has got to go in sequence. So, we've worked carefully with the contractors to understand that sequence and how we need to do that. We're working upstairs right now. We're doing some painting and upstairs, some pair of rooms, and we actually made a couple of offices upstairs that we ran out. Opportunities for funding. There's donations. We got fundraising banks. We got a bank on board now with a federal loan with the United States Department of Agriculture. That's, we're trying to get Russell Frye, Congressman, US Congressman here. He's, hopefully, he can if you buy that loan. But with the tangible situation we've got in Washington right now, the base kind of off-balance a little bit. We don't know who's gonna go where. But we still got corporate donations. We've got city and council, hopefully, can be a part of. And I'll, I'll make a point. We're not expecting big monies. We're not expecting from the county or the city to get us big monies, because y'all have so much money that needs, need for other people, and we're aware of that. Private donations are still possible, and possible is I mentioned, Nancy, is that the word in the line? So, we might go with a bond. We might be able to go with a counterbond. In reality, we can't get the volume of money we need from individual donations. It's not around. That's not a negative. That's just a fact. And daddy might talk about that, so. The summary, the scope of the renovation is significant. We've got, we've had some unexpected costs, but we started, the waterproof building was over for plus eight hundred thousand dollars. That's a ton of money that we can donate, and on top of that, we had that discovery cost I mentioned. We didn't know about electrical. That was a can of about a hundred and forty, yeah. So, we've run into a lot of barriers, but we've overcome, we all look well. Again, at risk of being repetitive, I know that we're debt-free. What I want to do today, what I, what I want you guys to do, feel free to ask questions, but I want you to come away from this today, say, that you guys have got to get one on. We're not, we're not, we're not rambling. We're doing this the right way. We're walking with a purpose. Very methodical. Everything we do is pretty strategic. We're playing back committee structure. That's what makes it so strong. Any questions? Do I have any questions at all for me?
I, I don't have a question, but I like the fact that your commission, your, your group is using social media to let the public know what you're doing, and kind of also put your name out there. So, I mean, our community, I kind of, I follow that a lot.
Well, thank you for saying that, because we, we dedicated to doing that. And I will share one thing with you real quick, but to, in, take this back in March of last year, the General Assembly appointed us five commissioners on our, on the commission. I'm the chair, but we have four others beyond me. And for, for the longest time, Monty Bell, I know some of you know Monty, great guy, he's an attorney. He's in Colombia now, but he's on, he's one of the commissioners, one of the commissioners. And we've got three more coming on, and I appointed those, or recommended those for a moment to the, to the state. One of them is Jerry Chee, who works at Sunoco. I worked with Jerry for about thirty years at Sunoco. Great guy, very talented. Linda Weatherford, the CEO, the SBC President, is a, is a real viable candidate for that role. And also Kylie Oden, I don't know if y'all know her or not, but Kylie's background is, is what we do. So, she's gonna be, and, and she's very, very important going forward as we start dealing with, you know, entertaining in acts and stuff like that. We've got a specialist coming in from, I think he's from North Carolina, but he's gonna tell us about our state setup and what our room that we have now. How does that relate to what we want to do with acts going forward? So, people kind of come in and assess where we are, and what we're trying to do. We're trying to draw on everybody we can for resources that, that can help us so we make the right decisions. If that makes any sense. Any questions?
With the, the acts that you will be pursuing, do you have a committee that's on to look at diversity of the acts that you're leading?
We do. Now, that committee, that committee has not been formed yet, but that is absolutely what we need to be. Happy to, happy to.
I'd be curious, thank you, first of all, for the update, but you said something that piqued my interest. I, I don't know anything about performance stages, but I've always been curious what, about what happened behind the curtain and what the theater's gonna do there. And again, I don't, because I'm not saying I, I want to have input on it, because I don't know, but I'm curious to see what happens, what it says. You know, what, what does it look like now? What does it need to look like to modernize? So, that's just good to, like, I'm curious under this.
Yeah, I think it's a great point. And really, I came up, committee structure came up with that idea. It was not made. And keep in mind, this is not about Benmore. This is about the city of Harpsville. It's about the theater. It's not about me. But we've got an incredible team working to get this thing going for us, so, but that's a great, that's a great question, Casey. We just felt like we needed some professionals. That's what we're doing, where we are, because we're the stage now. As I know that we're beyond being embryonic, but we're not where we need to go yet. And I know, for example, Jim Bonn, some of you might know him. He's on our, one of our committees. And Jim handles kind of our programming and stuff like that. But he, Jim had a, an event at the theater, as it is today. He had a forty, forty-five-piece orchestra and all the, all the companies to go with it. It was in the theater, so we've got some room. It's not like we're crowned, but we're not as big as some of the stages that, I don't think we're real, meaning a grand musical where they bring in, roll in all these companies and stuff. But we've got plenty of room. We got plenty of room.
Any questions? Anyone else?
Thank you. Thank you so much. I'm, the chair and the chairman, y'all have everything. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ready to go, Melissa?
Okay. So, again, thank you, guys, Kevin. This is the culmination, accumulation of quite a bit of work, as Casey mentioned. So, I wanted to thank all the staff, especially our finance team, for what they've done. We started meeting about this in February, and we started meeting with our department to prepare what they want, because there's a series of them. I want to call it really negotiations, talk about what they need, what they, we do, and then we talk about how we're gonna do it, and how we're going to fund it. The most important thing we do is try to have this balance, this budget balance, especially for the general fund. It's a requirement. So, what we have presented to you guys is a balanced fund. It has what we need to operate with field. It has some extras for what we're trying to accomplish according to our treaty planning. And what we're gonna do is go through each, each fund and explain what we're looking at. We're gonna start with some highlights of what's going on, and we're gonna get into capital expenditures, which is less this year, to be felt comfortable doing that, and also go into each fund. So, along the way, just stop me if you have any questions. We can sit and talk about each one if you want. Go in more detail if you like, but that's what we're gonna do. Again, starting with budget highlights, the general fund, enterprise fund, which is our utilities, sanitation fund, and then all other funds for the ads. So, just a few budget highlights, and this is from your first, from the beginning of the narrative, just explaining what we're trying to accomplish this year, kind of in summary. First one is COLA. We are still trying to keep up with that CPI. I used a southeastern regional study for that to determine how we should compare against what other, you know, what's dealing with deflation. So, we're recommending a 3.5% COLA this year. The good news is that retirement for the first time in a while has gone to zero. So, that was a mandated requirement from the state. It was at highs, it was how high did it go, forty years, nineteen percent, something like that, or fourteen percent?
No, it's been, but it's been increasing up until it capped.
Up until capped at the nineteen percent. And so, we're excited that that has finally had some relief from PIBA. Although, the health insurance, this is less than last year, with 4.5% mandatory increase from our insurance carrier, because all these events we've had, the hurricanes and the damages, different things, that is increasing the pool's cost. So, we had to do an increase to increase that. Load factor, 1% is good. It's not the best. We'd love to be below one, but that means that when we have our accidents, we have our injuries. It shows that we're not having any increase. We're also having a decrease, so, so we're at a 1%, so it's staying the same.
Does that say our risk is the same?
Our risk is the same, and so basically, I mean, we, we, of course, push safety. We try to do it, although, and not pick up police is not here. The police is one of our biggest, you know.
You get picked up.
You get picked up, no. They, they get, if a car's damaged in a pursuit, or if we have a employee injured when they're fighting somebody, that happens. And so, those all factor into our experience modifier. Well, 1% though, does mean that we are maintaining a, the average right now. Another exciting thing that we're very excited to announce is the return of in-house permitting and building official services. So, this is something that we have been talking about for quite some time. When I first started here five years ago, we had a contracted service. We did not have an in-house building official anymore after much, much feedback from the community, and after trying to do a different one. We opted to go back to an in-house person, so we're excited to have that in-house again. We will have the Director of Business and Professional Services, Brandon Bowby, over it. We will have a building official in-house with that. And we also have business license permitting specialists to assist with that. And then, the second thing we're very excited about is that we're gonna be taking over recreation for the city of Harpsville. We have been with a relationship with the county for decades. We appreciate the working with them, but we felt like with the staff we have now, it is ready for us to take it over ourselves. We have the staff in place. We have the infrastructure in place, and we have the funding to handle it. So, we're very excited about that. We'll go into more detail about that in a moment.
And for the benefit of some of the audience, that is predates me, at least, Bob, I don't know. If you could pinpoint how long the city has been working towards that, but it wasn't a, wasn't an overnight thing, so it's, it's, it's good to see it come to fruition.
And we, and we had to take the time to prepare ourselves. So, we have now hired a director who is used to doing programming. That's what we hired him for. We also have new staff that is, again, designed to do programming, so that, we've been building up to this point, and so we're very excited about the.
This would be fantastic.
We did it.
I wanted to ask a question. We have a deduction that is being taken, and I'm not sure what it is. I have like a twenty, about twenty dollars that is taken out, and we're getting a notification asking for what to go.
It might, well, I'll have to have HR looking. That could be something from the state. So, we do all our finances in software EDP, and then if there's any type of things that have to be taken out, we'll do it. Could have been, you might have done something in October, last year, and changed it. Let's get, we'll talk, I'll talk about, but if any of you ever have any questions about your deductions, or especially for employees' HR. Your employees in that sense, without the employees, you know.
And we'll be paying for the retirement, so.
You'll be paid for retirement and health insurance if you have it.
So, we have the option to have health insurance.
Exactly.
And I just want, you know, I just saw that, and I, I wanted to mention that.
Sure. Okay, I'll move to the plate. Okay? Any other questions about this, guys? All right, moving on. So, this is that COLA chart. I just wanted to show you guys how we are, cost of loading is COLA, sorry. So, this is where, I went back to twenty, I shouldn't say twenty. Those dates are off. I apologize. This is 2026, 25, 24, 23, 22, so ignore that 26. I'm gonna put my cursor as you can see. So, this is to show you where we were. We actually were much lower, and I started tracking this actually when I first started, pre-cov, and we started looking at the data, and showing that we are trying to keep in step with CPI. We don't want, at some points, I think we've, we've gone higher than that, but you see, we're still kind of chasing that goal. So, we're within 2.6% of where the southeastern CPI is, and this data comes, they predicted, March is predicting for next year, 3%, but that is really bearing right now, because the market's kind of crazy. So, we anticipate 3.5 will get us within, again, stone's throw of that. So we anticipate three point five will get us within, again, stone's throw of that. Any questions on that? All right. All right, this is the parks and recreation transition. I wanted to dive into the details. I mentioned to you guys before, we do have a foundation donation that is coming to us, it's a one-time money, and we know we have kind of one-time upfront costs to get this thing going. So the net impact on the budget is only eighteen thousand dollars this year. It will go down though, because if you look at this one-time football gear, of that thirty-nine thousand, thirty-three thousand's football equipment. So just that, that's to last for about eight to ten years. So with maintenance and with us keeping it up, we anticipate that it is sustainable with just registration fees. So we're excited about that. One thing we want to make sure that county residents will still be able to participate, it will be seamless for all county residents. You shouldn't even know a difference. You'll be registering with the city of Hartsville. We've assisted with that in the past, so we are still gonna be doing the same thing. So again, this is a long time coming, we're very excited about it. Council was pushing this for a few years, so we're excited to be able to offer to you guys this year.
In the county and city residents would pay the same rate?
So currently, we have, I submitted an agreement to the county council that would allow them to pay us to subsidize that. We're waiting for them to respond to that, but that would guarantee that they would pay the same. Right now, we would have, we're anticipating, not anticipating a change to that, because we, again, we can offer the same, right? That's, it's possible county residents could pay more if the county does not fund us in any way.
Could they pay more than that?
The county, no, we all pay the same, city and county.
Pay the same then? Okay.
Yeah, and that's what we would want to do. And this was, this has been, again, this is years of conversation with the county. We've danced around numbers before. There was a number that came up this past time, we thought that was good. It does cover our costs, it also allows us to, if we felt like adding another staff member in with the money that we give, we don't need another staff member to run it, but it'd be nice. So we are very excited that they potentially are considering that, but I have not heard back from that.
All right.
Are there any safety grants for football equipment?
Yes, oh yeah. There's grants we can go after, we're looking at, because we need to get started, we're gonna outright purchase this time. So if we go forward, we're gonna be looking at grants to fund these things. We need to get the program started now, that's the point. So we don't really have time to wait on that. And we have a grant from, we have a donation to cover some costs without pressure.
Um, Councilman, Brian, um, one of the users, um, or residents from Hartsville of Darlington County took loans for football.
There's a lot of, we got probably thirty kids, I know they play in the league.
Yes.
But they'll, they'll come back. And some get this role of death, they'll come back. But I know it's close to thirty kids, not gonna leave it right now. But there is more. It's at least a whole team, I know, is in a different meeting at the same.
That will finally come back.
And neither of them will. And I spoke with former NFL star Tony McDaniels, this is recent as Sunday, and he's interested in getting involved in that and that.
I don't talk to him. Well, our plan is for July of one to take it over. Any sports that are still, if they've started, we're gonna allow the county to finish those seasons out. But eventually, we will be taking over everything. Correct, because it's, so the ZIL operating at Byerly Park, it's our facilities, the city staff will be running. Okay? Any questions? All right. All right, jumping into capital lease, this is general fund, I know it's a little fuzzy to read, but this is police, fire, parks and recreation, streets and grounds, and then there is some work for the museum. So the majority of it is vehicles, we are asking for six vehicles. The capital lease for police, there's some barricades, we're looking at getting in some more solutions for our radars and whatnot across the city. Fire, we are looking to do some renovations to the building, some furniture. A front pad where the truck comes out onto, we're looking to do that. And then we also need a new staff vehicle. In the recreation, we are looking to do some painting, it's a new gym equipment in the facility, and also adding in a utility kind of park, not a four, we worked with a golf park, sorry. Streets and grounds to get another vehicle and mower, tractor mower, and then also a trailer and a parking lot. We need to look at redesigning the parking lot behind, or SBC parks next to that, between them and the library. That parking lot is in a bit of disarray, it needs some attention. So we're gonna be looking at doing that, especially with one church coming in, we want to redesign potentially with it. Dumpsters R, things like that. In total, and then the addition, we're sitting, it does need some attention, we need some plumbing work done. And here, we anticipated about thirty grand. So on all, it's about six hundred and thirteen or seventeen thousand dollars. Last year, we did two point two million, so six thirteen. Any questions about these capital requests? And we'll talk more in detail about the excluded different departments if you'd like. All right, moving on. We have more capital to talk about. This one is utilities, water sewer at Neptune Island, and then also sanitation, so funds two and eight. In water and utilities, we do, we split them up between two, but these will be cross-used across the different areas. We are looking for a new asphalt roller, new reel loader, concrete pad, water main rehab, which we've been doing throughout downtown. And then cemetery pump house, which is the cemetery water tank, a new roof, then some lift station improvements, and then again, some more relining of root treatment. In the water park, we are looking at eighty thousand dollars in park improvements, which is kind of general maintenance. And then finally, for sanitation, we need a new truck to pick up with the lift gate on the back that can pick up the roll carts and take those deliveries. On all, that is about five hundred and sixty thousand dollars for utilities and ninety-five thousand for sanitation.
Question. On sanitation part D, you know, we did clean up about two weeks ago. And I still have some leaves that, you know, ripped up and put them out. And they did not get picked up.
They weren't the bags, so if you let me know where they were, they're part of that cleanup, we can get them. But we do, we've been having, the bag, the leaf bag program has been in place for two years now.
Right.
We are still offering bags for free. If you go down to Public Services, we can help you roll carts if you want one. But if it was part of the cleanup, let us know, we'll come get them.
All right.
But people are back, we're, we're still have some pullouts, but for the most part, people are complying with the leaf.
Yeah, and, and some people just don't know.
Sure. And we're happy to educate and to give them the resources they need to do it.
Because I, I told someone that we had to buy bags now.
Well, they can still get it from Public Services.
I called sanitation and I couldn't get an answer. So I said, you know, I guess we have to buy bags now.
Text me those addresses, we'll take your.
Oh, thank you.
Any other questions about capital lease? This next chart is just to show our payments and how they are going, and rolling up, a lot rolling up in twenty thirty-one. This changes as we acquire more brands.
No.
No, sorry, sorry, okay, not brands. You can see this is the kind of area that we're in. Any questions about that? All right. We're gonna jump on the general fund, which is very exciting. General funded is the largest, you know, the most departments of the city. Actually, I thought I showed what, but it is our police, fire, finance, HR. Everyone is in this area, except utilities, but most of them are. Yeah, I'm skipping it. All right. This is a history, which I thought was important for you guys to see. Yeah, that's what I was. I want to show you, these are our actual, what we, the budget and what we spent. And we started tracking this, I tracked this from twenty eighteen back. See, the green is our revenues, blue is the expenditures. So since, really since twenty nineteen, we have every year come under budget. And what's very exciting is this past year, which are audit numbers, we have one point one million dollars in net position. So we really outperformed ourselves this past year, so we're very excited. This is a testament to the staff, they are keeping costs low, and revenues are increasing every year, which has been very exciting to see. We've gone from a ten million dollar budget to a fifteen million dollar budget from revenue. So we're very excited seeing that happen. And as that, as that increases five million dollars, we're able to add more things to the city. This is a summary of the budgeted numbers, just to see where we're tracking. So these are what we spent, this is what we anticipated to spend. This year, we are anticipating a modest increase from fourteen nine twenty-three last year to now fifteen two eighty-nine in general fund. And again, those are even because it has to be balanced, we need to budget them out, budget them. Any questions about this, guys?
Previous slide is a good one.
Yeah. We're very excited about that, it shows, again, it shows a testament to what we're trying to do here, which is keep costs low, but also try to increase our costs. The city is, if you look at these numbers, if you look at this, this chart alone shows you the city is doing quite well. Financially, it is healthy. Okay? This is a pie chart to explain what the, where the bulk of the money is coming from for revenue. Fifty-four percent is taxes, thirty-two percent is permits and fees, so that's license and whatnot. We do have a transfer in from our utilities department, and then we do have a small sale of assets every once in a while, not this, not a, this year, and then there go a bunch, an intergrup bunch of monies coming in from state, various states fees. So that's where our money's coming from. This is what I want to show you, that's all the departments in general fund, to give you an idea. And this is where most of the money's going. Thirty-nine percent of that fifteen million is going to public safety. So we invest heavily in police and fire. And then general government is the rest of the, essentially everyone else other than police and fire. Public works is streets and grounds, so we are investing in our downtown, keeping our areas clean. And it just shows you the breakdown, airport cemetery, culture and recreation is recreation, so it just shows you what we're doing. We do invest heavily in public safety here. All right, now I'm gonna jump into each general fund and increased funds, so if you have any questions about, let me know. You do have the narrative in front of you, which explains each of the numbers I'm talking about, I'm just gonna give you the overview sheet. So please feel free to stop me if you ask any questions about it, what you guys were doing. First up is general administration, legal department, this is four ten. This is where the majority of everything is generalized, so our IT budget is here, legal expenses for the city in general are in here. We do have some increased expenditures across the board there. But overall, it's a very low, it's from one point six seven to one point six four actually, what we have. Of your budgetary report. Save the paper, please. They're fine, they're up to eighty-two. Any questions on four ten? Okay. Let's move on to mayor and council. A shout out to T. Span right there.
This is page twenty-eight, this is where mayor and council is.
Increases here, we do have some increases in, we did change around some of the different positions in there. And we also had to add in for the election this year, which went up. The cost for election went up.
For anybody accusing us of giving ourselves a raise, the majority of that changes upon the election.
None of, council did not receive a raise.
No.
What, and it's, but.
You, you, council has to vote for the raise, and you guys have not voted for a raise. So you have no raises, nor COLA, you don't receive COLA.
It'll raise anyway, so.
Ma'am.
So council has not asked for a raise to pass eleven almost.
Yes, ma'am.
Now, we have to ask for a raise.
Yes, ma'am.
We have to ask for a raise before our general vote.
So you can raise your, city council can raise a raise, so Alex, this will not go into effect until after the election.
That's off the way, or do you?
Yep. And that's, so you're not, you're incentivizing, so you're not taking yourself.
I understand that, looks like a bad, you know, from council salary and then sending it to the retirement system and all of that, that knocks our.
Yes, ma'am.
So, quick on that, it's not my race. So council decides that next month to give us a raise.
It will go into effect this November, after September.
You stick on the law, I don't know where I'm going to get the next two years, two years, right?
I just made that comment because I'm, I'm still anticipating that false accusation.
We have two staff members in here, the city clerk and director of special projects, we're in this position, so that's where that comes from, I was, we have a new director of special projects, so that explains a little bit of the increase, but then also operating expenses, we do have to increase for the election this year, so. That's right, we also do electronic document management this year.
So it's a term of increase of the election, the county, state, the county.
And their, their cost for election workers went up.
They're paying them more than subsidies that they're working for.
So I'll increase the day of the election, I'll increase prep for the election up to that day, and then we have to go ahead and budget expenses and run off.
And I thought it was interesting because we could have had a cost savings if we didn't do the early voting, but we want to tell our citizens to do early voting. But it does make, is a big difference what we have to pay for early voting. But that's a, we want to early vote. Oh, it's a big deal.
You know, depending on how many people go vote, first time to cause, the state don't get much of a return on any investment.
You got to pay for it, we learn.
Right.
Yes, all right.
Because I can't remember, it was at least four thousand, it might be a war.
And this particular election is the mayor.
What, over seven thousand this year?
This year, the election is the mayor and three council members, and the mayor is at large, so all polling questions will need to be open.
Yep.
All right.
Which, um.
Early voting, I'm all for seven thousand dollars.
Yeah, but I'm gonna say in our upcoming reelection, we have the early vote and then all the preseason.
That's exactly right, so we did not cut it, we said, no, we won't early vote as an option.
And everybody will be at one side.
Yes. So it would be for all the preseasons.
Correct.
Yes, correct. Any other questions about this, guys? Okay. Next up is court operations. We got a slight increase. Thirty-two, and that's only, what's the one board, what's happening board?
Yep.
This is, this is just judges.
The judges.
This is the three judges you guys employ. One of our four staff employees. Okay? Next is city manager, this includes one and a half staff, myself and assistant city manager, she's split between this and finance.
Page thirty-five.
Thirty-five, thank you. There's Jerry Tean down there, too. Any questions? Those are my buddies. If you were in the picture, I would take a look at you, too, please.
No. Oh, that's you, okay. I didn't see you.
Did I, did I blend in too much?
Yeah, 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 okay, I apologize.
Can you clarify how long we budgeted for ACM?
We, we budgeted for an ACM in twenty twenty. No, well, yes, the assistant city manager was replaced before me. And then the position had been there, and there was, pushed to get one when I first started, but we waited a year.
We've been budgeting for at least six years.
Yes. Mary Catherine was the assistant city manager before that.
And for some reason, there was kind of a, I don't know what she was or not.
Well, and the funny thing here, and this is just to be, she's also the CFO and the director of the water park, so it's a triple position. So the assistant city manager, she actually would probably have worked as CFO somewhere else, so.
Do you have five departments here?
I do.
Yes. Every year, we, we additional add this responsibility to much of her shift there.
But prior to there, we didn't have that.
No, we had, the city manager was all of our old departments, assistant city manager before was only others, the special project.
Yeah, we had nothing close to what we have now.
That we have, we're, we're very lucky. All right. Next. Information technology, this is IT, I apologize. And so, you guys might recall, thirty, thank you, just shot it out. You might recall, when I first got here, we had a, we did do a big change in IT, in case you probably called more than anyone else, but, but we were able to get significant cost savings. Unfortunately, IT is rapidly growing, so this is now back to the level we were when I first started. So we had a, you can see right there, or actually, it's. So we had a, you can see right there, or actually, it's higher than I first started.
No, but you started before that.
We just started before that, so.
Yeah, it's just because it's five years.
We have, we have tried to go away from that thin client, which was a remote work thing, to everyone having their laptop. But costs have just continued escalating. This is, this is kind of across the board for all cities. IT is a massively growing, it's going to be one of our biggest departments if it was a separate department. But we do contract a VC three.
My question was, the end of this contract work or?
It is, we just renewed it. We have two more years left on the contract.
And that is one that we'll need to be going back out every, every opportunity we get for that, because it is such a big part of the budget.
We renewed last June, and so renewed again. It renewed for three years last June, so come up this June, we'll be two years late.
And, and we, our services that we receive from them, they are up to par and, you know, doing what needs to be done.
We will definitely bring this out for two years.
We will be.
We will be. We did attempt, and we had, we had some conversations with another company that was actually more local, so we're looking to try to do a local option.
Yeah, I need to take a test or?
I know, I can get that to it, I haven't done it.
Don't click on those little stuffs.
I know what you're talking about.
Really, the increase is going to be attributed to cybersecurity. Cybersecurity is one of the biggest things. It is our, our employees, unfortunately, from cyber standpoint are weak. They want to click on a link and jeopardize the integrity of our network, that's the problem. So we take, that's the cost that arises, I got most of it. But we have a wonderful staff member who oversees it. She does an excellent job, and she is on it. So we're excited to have that, but it is something that we need to look at and make sure we're getting the best bang for it.
Because I'm, I'm looking, I'm like, quarantine, okay, well, what happened? You know, what did I do?
I don't know why they call it that.
Yeah, you know, you think you did something wrong, or you, you just opened up your packet and now you quarantine, or I get my next one, or, you know.
I know, I get that experience.
Well, I had, I had a previous IT director, I asked this, and are you afraid of getting hacked? He goes, I'm afraid every day. And I was like, well, that's great, it's good for your health, you know, so they live in fears, and that's why.
I must say, most recently, we had a call, Eva and I did, on an issue we had, and they were very apologetic about the issue. So they do want to try to keep our business.
I mean, they're a legitimate company.
Yes.
We just work through some issues.
And they're well respected throughout the state, so, and there are certain things with the police department, there are certain requirements that we have that are going to be a cost no matter what.
Right.
That we're going to have to have.
We have to maintain certain securities so they're also accessed and not confidentially.
But that is why I asked the question, are we just supposed to be in everything?
We are, currently, we are getting everything we need by the contract. Currently. But this is, expect these costs to go up every year. Until we can find another vendor potentially, this is what's going to be. The finance department is, again, everybody. Page forty-one is essentially everyone other than our business and professional services downstairs. Essentially, the majority of, a bit of our staff, we did have a decrease because we shifted. The director of business services is now fifty percent of the planning, so you'll see a true up on the planning department. Any questions? And this department not only takes all the water bills, but the finance department also assists the city with all of their finances. So every department works through the finance department, so the customers are also interlinked as well, just to throw it out there. Human resources? We have three staff members, there they are, small increase. Any questions? Next up is Main Street. And if you were following the news, we were just nationally accredited for Main Street, which is very exciting. So we're very excited about that. This is tremendous amount of work now. So we're very excited about getting, and we've, and again, we became, we were on a double secret probation for a minute, and now we're back off of it. We're not, we're back off of it, we got off of it, and now we're nationally accredited, so it's a big turnaround for us, twice, yeah, it's great.
So this is our second accreditation since we.
Since then, yeah. Exactly. We're very excited about it. And if you saw the press release, I mean, we have ninety-seven percent occupancy downtown, downtown extremely healthy, multiple new businesses starting. Tremendous outreach, I think, by our staff to the Main Street businesses. It is a breeze. If you are in the program, if you're in the Main Street district, we stay at the Main Street district, which includes parts of South Hartsville, East Hartsville, not just our downtown. So we're very excited about what Main Street means to the city.
Yeah, I think the latest opening is beside Four Friends Coffee and Ice Cream, it used to be Celebratory Boutique, is a collectible card shop.
They just opened.
Carolina Sports Cards, maybe, present for Carolina Sports Cards? And I, I thought that was a good use, that's a tiny little space, you're limited what you can do, but that, that type of business, to me, seems well suited for it.
And that owner messaged me immediately, wanted to know if there was anything here. He's been trying to come for a while and hasn't been able to find a space. And that's actually their third location. They have one at the beach and somewhere else, so this is their third location, and they have been trying to get into Hartsville. And when that came up, and I messaged him, said, hey, this might be, I'll do it, so they have been wanting to get here.
I recently got a big free re-bond of baseball cards out of that, when I was a little guy, I might have taken by there.
Stephen would love to look at it.
Let them show me that were fifteen dollars, you know, where it was.
I need to take them to Andy Bro show.
Excuse me, now where, where is this called?
On College. So the barber shop, Four Friends, we see a spit shop.
Just, they painted the, the accents for blue. You'll see it when you go to East College.
So at this point, all the only buildings that are empty that we really know of, this lighter side, of course, we're still working through that with them. And then there's one, our building, that's, we had to work on, and then there's one more right now.
Adventure.
Adventure, yeah, so we're the whole of it. Okay. All right, moving on. Fanny and Zoe? Peter Pitt, yeah. So this, again, you see a large increase. We were moving staff around to be in here. This is a big, important, new position for building official. Well, we're trying to return it back to the business navigating, type of setup.
So when is that projected to be?
So it, right now, we, the staff are in place. The only one we don't have is the building official, but we have, we're not going to put it out until this budget is approved. But we are engaged with another contractor for a six-month contract with option of month-to-month to help us in the immediate.
I think you just confirmed my question. We can't do that until this council approves this.
Well, council is, if we're willing to, then I'd be happy to put it out today, but we are, we were waiting for it to be approved. Having Safe Bill come back online, a little bit, alleviate some of the pressure to get this in place immediately. They have already jumped right in and are working on ones. They've already actually assisted us with two projects that were stalled, and so they have taken those over. And so we're very pleased that they are, these projects kept moving again, as we slowed down before.
Well, let's, let's talk about the possibility of speeding it up, not now, but of what that might mean and what you can do.
I probably feel comfortable right after first read, I'd be putting it out, you know, that'd be okay, which is next.
For me, from a budget amendment standpoint, that would be the only budget amendment we might, we're going to have budget amendments, I believe, this year.
And also, I realize.
We're not going to have.
We're not that far out.
Right, it's way closer than I was thinking.
You have to minimize the budget amendment, I would like it.
Of course, the word is codes enforcement going to land.
So codes enforcement is still in fire, police, with the transition, not fireplace, fire. With the transition, we were looking at, it made sense to keep that in place for right now. But we are actually looking at that right now. That position in particular is what it means, work and land potentially, and what we'll do. So that's all that it works.
The new position, how much will we could not have to pay currently, subcontractor?
It, it'll cost us more.
We won't be saving. It is, it is actually one of the reasons why we went with that. It is a great cost savings for us to outsource it. But when the quality is not there, we're continuing to have these issues, we're going to front that cost.
And perspective, so when we first switched out, I think the building official was in the sixties or seventies. And so we're talking about the total compensation, about eighty to ninety thousand dollars for the building official back in twenty, twenty twenty. We went to Safe Bill, which was sixty thousand dollars here, and they handled the majority of all that. And now we are budgeting, I think, a hundred and twenty for a total compensation for, for a building official. And we do anticipate revenue permits going up, which will cover that to a certain extent, but not covering the entire. An in-house building official does cost more than a contractor. Same with an in-house IT costs more than a consultant one, but you, you have give and take of it.
Well, we have an in-house building official. At one point in time, we had an in-house building official who was also a code official.
Yes, ma'am. It's a possibility.
That's and enforcement everything correctly, and they, you know, we didn't have a whole lot of having to reschedule and that type of thing. It, it ran, seems.
Well, I'm hopeful, I'm, I'm used to having an in-house building official, that's what I had in my past two cities, and I, I feel like with working with the city, and especially that person reporting up to, up eventually to me, it's a little easier to navigate those situations that come up, especially in a small town.
It is a difficult to fill position. That's how we ended up outsourcing it as well. We had turnover in that position, and then we could not get it filled. It is a difficult to fill position. That's why I'm thinking that Safe Bill will do month-to-month if we end up in a situation where it's difficult to fill it.
There, there, it's a, unfortunately, it's kind of a dying profession. It's one of those prospective professions we're watching that will eventually need to be outsourced at some point. It just takes too much to get credited, all the full licensing you need, because you can make more money just with a plummy license or electrical license. But a lot of times, you have retired guys who want to have a second job, so we're saving for, you know, another chance. In fact, the position, when you guys were trying to hire one here, I hired the person who was here, we used three. And we took the building official, sorry. So we hired that building official because we can pay for it.
Does it warrant cool down position?
Absolutely. Absolutely, a hundred percent. We, the biggest complaint we had with Safe Bill when I got here was we only did two-day week inspections. We went to three-day week inspections. With the next contractor we used, we went to five-day week inspections, and those are being filled. The amount of starts that we have, especially housing starts, if you recall from the previous chart I sent you guys a few years ago, we tripled housing starts this past year. And there's a lot more on the horizon coming, neighbors, so we absolutely need this.
So when we just got back with Safe Bill, like, we went back to that contract, we told them five days. They asked what we wanted, we're not even planning to stop. We, we need that.
Next day inspection. You let them know by four o'clock, before you have a next day inspection. When we have our own person, we'll be the same setup.
It's a very hard, careful one. It is a difficult position to fill, so certainly advertise better.
Yeah, I think that's part of what I was thinking, to get ahead of our competition.
It's a difficult position to fill also because, like, brick masons, farmers feel great, just like that. They, they're not going into that figure, and so it's almost become a lost art.
Yes, ma'am.
And when you don't, when, when you do that, and you don't have used the session plan, then, you know, your, your business, your city, you take a dive for that.
Absolutely.
Because when, when we had a building official that did codes enforcement, we didn't have all of the assistance like we have today.
Right, sure.
I mean, he was like, doing probably five jobs. And so it's, I understand that it's a hard position to fill, so we have to, in filling that position. I, I just wanted to say that we, we need to get codes where it needs to be.
Sure, I understand. Well, so we, we've had multiple conversations, my staff and I, that now regularly with different contractors of the area, I have almost a weekly meeting with one of them in particular. And the goal is to discuss and understand what they need, where they're coming from. We tried a new contractor, it would have, there was no reason why it shouldn't have worked, but in that, we got a lot of more feedback, I think, from, you know, because there was a big push for us to switch, even when we had a previous one. Because there was complaints there, and there will always be complaints, and I'm not sugarcoating, you're going to get, this is a hard, a difficult position to be, just like this. And so we're very excited that we've gotten tremendous buy-in from the community members. Brandon has been the director of business and professional services, been reaching out, talking, the buy happen. So the goal is to make this a partnership. The city, there's so many things that can stop a project, the city really needs to not be one of them. Don't look at that, too. The city is, the city doesn't need to be a roadblock, and that's what we're trying to stop. We really do not want to be the red tape when people dig us in. And granted, we get blamed for things that are our fault, that's okay, but same time, we have the accountability when we do things wrong.
Yeah, that, that.
And that's, that's perfectly fine, and we're.
That, right, they, when we do something wrong, or we do something that we don't know that we're actually doing wrong. And when it's brought to our attention, then we need to correct that just at that time, and not pushing it out, pushing it out. Because if you don't correct it at that time, then whoever that party is that, if we don't correct it, it pushes them into cost and loss.
Sure.
And so that's why it has to be addressed immediately.
I would like to propose we take a quick break. We're about halfway through the general fund. If anybody else has any other questions or comments?
Well, and I want to say this is a good time. We're going to call up our police next. We do have a, a little tour outside, I guess you could say. We have the police car, it's up front that side. So we are doing a new wrap, I sent you guys the image of it. We have an example of one outside, you guys want to take a look at it.
So you want to go through?
No, we'll just, well, you guys can take a look, and we'll come back to police after that. I'll stretch a little.
We stand in.
Resetting?
Reset. I think we're ready to go. It is my pleasure to call to order the City of Hartsville Budget Workshop and Special City Council Meeting on Tuesday, May sixth. Thank you all, staff, for the monumental network that takes us to this together. Thank you to our staff and guests who were just here to participate. We appreciate you. That said, we will kick off with the indication led by Ms. Match, Ms. Matt, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance and the stability pledge. I invite you to stand and pray in your faith, that we pray power.
Good morning, Father, God, and God among us. Father, thank you for this beautiful day, that you provide us together and son, to do the business of the city of Hartsville that we all owe so much. Father, thank you for your continued divine protection, oh, the city of Hartsville. And Lord, we ask you in the name of Jesus that you continue to protect us, continue to help us build Hartsville out to where it would serve every citizen, every service, and every section. Father, we ask you that you will help Hartsville to grow forward and grow forward together. As we do work in this project workshop meeting, let us be mindful of citizens' dollars, and be attentive, and let us use it to the best use of all, the city of Hartsville. Please, now, the rest we left, the many blessings of Jesus Christ we do burn.
Your Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, in the vision of the liberty and justice for all. Finished with this stability pledge, I'll start that, too. I pledge to build a stronger and more prosperous community by advocating for civil engagement, respecting others' rights and wishes, and finding solutions for the better of our city or town. And one last thing, it is municipal clerks meeting, everybody, and the, our clerk and former clerk have a whole lot to do with making this meeting happen, so let's give it a little. I don't know how early you were here this morning, but I should, it was a lot earlier than I was, so I appreciate, appreciate what you do to, to keep us on track and make these meetings happen. That said, uh, presentation, we have a guest that you would like to, um, where we stand right here, I guess?
Yeah, that way you're a camera.
And, uh.
Steve Scott. Thank you. Thank you, Ted. First of all, thank y'all for letting me come back. I say that because I've been here twice before. We're gonna do it a little different today. I've abbreviated a good bit of this PowerPoint to be more specific to our path forward. I think that's important. We're far enough along now. We're we're beyond being embryonic, let me say that. We're at the point now where I want to show you where we've been, where we are, and where we want to go, and more importantly, how we're gonna get there. So that being said, we started out, the center did, with this renovation project. And I learned a long time ago, part of intelligence is knowing what you don't know. So if you look at this committee structure that we put together, those are all highly critical people. Their their skill sets are vast, and they all bring a passion to what we're doing, and that's that's what's so important. But anyway, that's what that was. This is our mission statement. It's pretty obvious. You've seen that probably before. Most of me, most mission statements are pretty general. They're not. They don't give a lot of detail, but that's basically what that is. But we believe in that. We have, we we operate with two markers. The one is we don't run, we walk with a purpose. And the second, it's amazing what you can get done if no one cares who gets credit. So we we believe in that. Thank you. This is, this is where we were. This theater was underwater, literally. You can see the damage from the walls. This was the, this was the interest of the atrium when we come into the theater before we started renovation. That's what it looks like today. We finished it. It's done. Long and saucy. We built it as waterproof. One of the things I will comment on, it took fourteen months to work through this building. We had no clue what it was involved when we first started. We thought a new membrane discoverers on the roof were gonna do it. No. We replaced every mortar joint in the bricks on that building outside and sealed it. And that's why it's waterproof today. And we pared off. This is, these are just some old photographs we put in the atrium. We had them longed up for the purpose of fitness and sponsor. This is what's first or second arc of that. That is, that is right. Yes, yes. That was Kim on that one side. But yeah, I think that's Kim over on the right.
And the horse is named for Billy. Billy the man.
Yeah, yeah. That chandelier was given by a friend of mine. That came, that's custom made. It's Art Deco chandelier. It came from the West Coast. And that's, that's in the atrium. It looks great. It really looks cool. That's, that, just to make a, make a point on that, that was about a twenty-five thousand dollar gift. So that was, that's pretty generous on this part. This is our seating model. These are, these are the seats. Our seats, when we replace them, will be about two-hundred-and-seventy thousand dollars. And we sold close to eighty of them right there now. We sold eighty of them and been bought by by citizens. And they, you can buy one if you want to. But anyway, that's, that's a little seating model right there. That's just a picture of the inside of the main auditorium. I think it's what thirty-two feet high? Thirty-two feet high. It's all painted. And we actually went back with all of the original colors. We did some pulls and chips off the wall, showing what we have got to color. Those are the original colors to the theater. So we're maintaining the integrity of that Art Deco. These are some of the things we've done in twenty-four. This is kind of where we are today. We put in new lighting, the building's waterproof. We've got the main auditorium painted and fixed and ready for seating. We put in a new, uh, new electricity. That's kind of a discovery. It cost about a hundred and forty grand to get the wiring back where it needed. They were safe. Put in a new HVAC system. And we've got a new sound system, state-of-the-art sound system in there now. So we're getting there. We're just on where we need to go, but we're we're slowly but surely getting there. This is, this is the, the lighting cost. This is what it's cost us to put the new lighting in. It's about a hundred and eleven, twelve thousand dollars. These are all light fixtures that our decorating committee, you saw on that first slide. I think it's Veronica, Pershery, Jennifer, and Sherry West. They selected all of these from, uh, Art Deco. This is the model analysis, what we're doing. This business model makes the theater positive on cash flow when we utilize it. Before, it was kind of iffy. We're changing it over. This is, this is kind of a, uh, projection on cost. I'm gonna give you an example. We know that we've got nine hundred seats. We increased the seats from eight forty-seven up to nine hundred. That's a lot of seats. There's nothing in the PD that's really gonna compete with us on seating capacity. And you see, capacity is revenue. But we know it's gonna be hard to sell nine hundred seats. That's a lot of seats. If we bring in big events, we gotta have twelve anchor events a year. Those twelve events, they 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 could cost us anywhere from forty to sixty thousand to get up here. But that's gonna be big-name entertainment, and that's what's gonna sell out the capacity of the theater. We're gonna do that twelve times a year. And if you look at that business model, we're we're safe. It's like a contingency plan. If you look, we, I'm saying, we're not gonna sell out that theater every time. We're gonna sell it at sixty percent, which would be five hundred and forty seats. And if we have an average ticket price of sixty-two fifty, which is low for a fifty thousand dollar act, we're gonna make almost seventeen thousand dollars a month for each event that we do. So that business model tells me the theater's gonna be sustainable. We've done our math on it. We know how it's gonna work. We just got to get to the point where we can open the doors just right now. The theater's been closed two and a half years. I mean, that, it it, time has gone by pretty quickly, but we've literally been closed for two and a half years. And we don't make a dime in the closed place yet.
Yes. Um, I remember when Ms. Rose Thomas reached out to the N W C P event at the theater. They had Jared Ruffler one year. He just passed away fifteen years ago.
The same.
Yes. Um, and and it was a soul, it was a soul died in. And I want to ask, do you have a lineup right now for people that you're trying to find to do events? Or are you working with other groups to get a break?
That's a great question. And and in fact, we do. We have, uh, we know the historical events that they committed to come back and we we open. But we're looking beyond that. We're looking for, uh, uh, there's, there's a group called TNT. It's the Temptations of the Thomas. Incredible performance. I saw them in Virginia. That's about eighty grand to bring them in. But if we can sell the theater and we can pay for it, it's not a big deal. To me, that is more important, uh, than than making a lot of money off the show. But we, yes, we are. We're looking. I've got some, we've got some connections with some of our committee people to go to, uh, to get maybe Amy Graham, okay, skilled country star of international. So we, we're looking, yeah, absolutely. And we will actually be working, it's good with agency, to help us guide us through there. But your point, these events, most of them have to be booked a year out. And you got to pay them before they they come to. So there's a, there's a lot of noise in all of that. Ambitions are good. There's some reality, the reality checks are there too, but that's a great point.
And and the reason I brought it up, because a lot of times, um, I've had, decided to have this in more because I have to have them know that that should come in from out of town to be here, like the Thanksgiving holiday or something like that. And they just, you know, were so enthused about being able to see a star like that.
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah. Uh, we look, I've been watching, I've been following the town shooting, so I'm a person. And a lot of the big-time acts that we did fifteen years ago, they're looking to come to smaller venues. The smaller venues, they know bring smaller dollars to them. So that puts them right in our wheelhouse. About nine hundred seats, you know, we can, we can have a pretty good, uh, if anybody would pay a hundred dollars a seat, you'd see a star, I mean, a real star. So, but that's a great point. But we're working on that. That's, we got, absolutely. Thank you. But this is kind of the business model around events as we bring them in. This is, uh, this is kind of where we need to go financially. Everything that's highlighted is done and completed. An important part of this is we've got a committee that's very strong in finance. We've got the right people in there to do that. We don't owe a dime. Everything we've done is paid for, and we've got a bank to balance this pretty healthy. So now that bank balance we speak of, I think it's like two and four of Ken, is that right? Something like that. But Ken watches our money like a hawk. So they, they won't know to spend more than they can, but, um, that money's contingency money. We're not, we're not spending it on crazy things. We have to, because we have to operate the theater. It's, it's, it's cost intensive to operate, even though it's open, it's not open for for business. It's still an operational cost associated with it. So we watch it very carefully. But but I think the most important thing is we don't owe a thing. We, everything we've done is paid for. So I think that gives a lot of credibility to our management and responsibility. This is kind of a summary of who has contributed so far. And these are some big ones. We spent one point six billion dollars already. And these are contributors. If you go back, go back one step, I did look at that, uh, the center stage oversight decorating committee ideation and these, uh, video vision. We've consolidated a lot of that now. We pared back a little bit, but we've got a real strong committee structure now. We begin to do some subcommittee work out of that group, like we're talking to Nancy B. today. She's our brand expert now. She's, she's managing all the grants. So that's the kind of direction we're going in here. Thank you. This is, uh, the path forward. We're targeting to be open for business and have a, have a opening act on March thirty-first of twenty-six. Now, I think we could do it a little sooner, but that's, that's a long day if we could, you know, get it going. I think we could do that pretty easily. I'm staying pretty close to the North Industrial, who's gonna do all our interior work. And they're all scared. We know exactly how much we're gonna have to pay them every month based on the phases of construction. It's already outlined. So that part has been taken care of. We've already got a grand opening act. I met with, uh, you've probably heard of him. His name is Jacob Will, the international opera singer. He spent a lot of time, his life in Switzerland, but I had lunch with him in Colombia, and he's committed to come back. And that goes back to our mission statement about he's a local, local people. He's from Harlem. So all that's kind of lining up right now for us, but he could be our opening act. We've got the Long Bay Orchestra that'll be supporting him on stage. And so this could be, it's gonna be a big deal. And we have, we hope to have a gala, kind of a grand opening, drop-in party. We got to go. There's gonna come over for us. South Carolina State Arts Commission's been involved in in some of our funding. So this could be a big deal. The projected time for North Industrial to finish, once we start, will be about seven months. And I, and he, he said they could do it in six, but I know how the delays happen, so we're probably looking at about seven. But the things that we've got to do, and we've got to do these in sequence. The seats will be the very last thing to go in, believe it or not. But that's because once the demolition inside starts, we don't want to get them in there and give them dirt. So we got the seats that we're putting all new windows in and elevators going in. Offices got to go in sequence. So we work carefully with the contractors to understand that sequence and how we need to do that. We're working upstairs right now. We're doing some painting and upstairs repair rooms. We actually made a couple of offices upstairs that we ran out. Opportunities for funding. There's donations. We got fundraising banks. We got a bank on board now with, um, federal loan with the United States Department of Agriculture. That's, uh, we're trying to get Brussels Pride, Congressman, US Congressman here. He's, hopefully, he connected by that loan, but with the ten year situation we've got in Washington right now, everything's kind of off balance a little bit. We don't know who's gonna go where. But, uh, we still got corporate donations. Uh, we've got city and council. Hopefully, we can, we can be a part of. And I, I'll make a point. We're not expecting big monies. We're not expecting from the county or the city to get us big monies because y'all have so much money that needs to be for other people, and we're aware of that. The private donations are still possible, and possible, as I mentioned, Nancy, because they're working with the law. So we might go to the law. We might be able to go to county bankers. In reality, we can't get the volume of money we need from individual donations. It's not around. That's not a negative. That's just a fact. And daddy might talk about that. So, um, anyway. The story, the scope of the renovation is significant. We've got, we've had some unexpected costs, but we started, the waterproof building was over plus eight hundred thousand dollars. That's a ton of money that we can donate dollars out. And on top of that, we had that discovery cost I mentioned. And we didn't know about electrical. That was a can of about a hundred and forty three, whatever. Yeah. So we've run into a lot of barriers, but we've overcome, uh, we, we all live well. Again, at risk of being repetitive, I know that we did free. What I want to do today, what I, what I want you guys today, feel free to ask questions, but I want you to come away from this today saying that these guys have got to go on. We're not, we're not, we're not rambling. We're doing this the right way. We're walking with a purpose. Very methodical. Everything we do is pretty strategic. We're playing back a big structure. That's what makes it so strong. Any questions? Do I have any questions at all for me?
I, I don't have a question, uh, but, uh, I like the fact that, uh, your commission, your, 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 your group is using social media to let the public know what you're doing and kind of, uh, also put your name out there. So, I mean, our community. But I, I kind of, I follow that a lot.
Well, thank you for saying that, because we, we, we're dedicated to doing that. And I will share one thing with you real quick, but to, in, I think it's back in March of last year, the General Assembly appointed us five commissioners. On our board, on our, on the commission, with, I'm the chair, but we have four others beyond me. And, uh, for what, for the longest time, Marty Bell, I know some of you know Marty, great guy, he's an attorney. He's in Colombia now, but he's on, he's one of the commissioners. One of the commissioners. And we've got three more coming on, and I appointed those or recommended those for a moment to this, to the state. One of them is Jerry Chee, who works at San Diego. I worked with Jerry for about thirty years at San Diego. Great guy, very talented. Linda Weatherford, the CEO, the S B C review, is a, is a real viable candidate for that role. And also Kylie Oden, I don't know if y'all know her or not, but Kylie's background is, is, is what we do. So she's gonna be in, 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 she's very, very important to what we're following as we start dealing with, you know, entertaining and acts and stuff like that. We've got a specialist coming in from, uh, I think he's from North Carolina, but he's gonna tell us about our state setup and what our room we have now. How does that relate to what we want to do with acts going forward? So people kind of come in and assess where we are and what we're trying to do. We're trying to draw on everybody we can for resources that that can help us so we make the right decisions. If that makes any sense. Any, any questions?
Would be, um, the acts that you would be pursuing, do you have a committee that's wanting to look at the diversity of the acts that you're leading?
We do. Now, that committee, that, that committee has not been formed yet, but that is absolutely what we, we have to do.
Actually, I'll be curious. Thank you, first of all, uh, for the update, but you said something that piqued my interest. I, I, I don't know anything about performance stages, but I've always been curious what about what happened behind the curtain and what the, the theater's gonna do there. And again, I don't, it's, I'm not saying I, I want to have input on it, because I don't know, but I'm curious to see what that consultant says. You know, what, what does it look like now? What does it need to look like to modernize? So that's, that's good to, like.
Well, I, I, that's, I think it's a great point. And really, I came up, our committee structure came up with that idea, and it was not made. And 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 keep in mind, this is not about being, this is about the City of Parkville. You know, we got, it's about a theater. It's not about me. But we've got an incredible team working to get this thing going forward. So, but that's a great, that's a great question, you know. Casey, we just felt like we needed some professionals. That's what we're doing, where we are, because we're the stage now. As I know, we're beyond being embryonic, but we're not where we need to go yet. And I know, for example, Jim Bollinger, some of you might know him. He's on our, one of our committees. And, uh, Jim handles kind of our programming and stuff like that. But he, uh, Jim had a, an event at the theater as it is today. He had a forty, forty-five piece orchestra and all of the, all the companies to go with it. It was in the theater, so we've got some room. It's not like we're crowned, but we're not as big as some of the stages that, I don't think we'll be able to meet in a grand musical where they bring in, roll in all these. where they bring in, roll in all these companies and stuff. But we've got plenty of room. We've got plenty. Any questions? Anyone else? Thank you. Thank you so much. Your time, thank you. The chair is in, y'all have a, thank you.
Thank you.
Ready on this? Okay. So again, thank you guys for coming. This is the cumulation, accumulation of quite a bit of work, as Casey mentioned. So I wanted to again thank all the staff, especially our finance team for what they've done. We started meeting about this in February. And we started meeting with our department to prepare what they want because there's a series of, I want to call it really negotiations, talk about what they need, what they, we do. And then we talked about how we're gonna do it and how we're going to fund it. The most important thing we do is try and have this balance, this budget balance, especially for the general funds requirement. So what we have presented to you guys is a balanced budget. It has what we need to operate with, you know, it has some extras for what we're trying to accomplish according to our strategic planning. And what we're gonna do is go through each, each fund and explain what we're looking at. We're gonna start with some highlights of what's going on, and we're gonna get into capital expenditures, which is less this year, to be felt, be felt comfortable doing that, and also go with each fund. So along the way, just stop me if you have any questions. We can sit and talk about each one if you want. Go in more detail if you'd like, but that's what we're gonna do. Again, starting with budget highlights, the general fund, enterprise fund, utilities, sanitation fund, and then all other funds. So just a few budget highlights, and this is from your first, from the beginning of the narrative. Just explaining what we're trying to accomplish this year, kind of in summary. First one is COLA. We are still trying to keep up with that CPI. I used a southeastern regional study for that to determine how we should compare against what other, you know, what's dealing with inflation. So we're recommending a 3.5% COLA this year. The good news is that retirement for the first time in a while has gone to zero. So that was a mandated requirement from the state. It was at highs, goodness, how high did it go, 40 years, 19%? Something like that, or 14%?
No, it's been, but it's been increasing up until it capped.
Up until capped at the 19%. And so we're excited that that has finally had some relief from PIBA. Although the health insurance, this is less than last year, with 4.5% mandatory increase from our insurance carrier because all these events we've had, the hurricanes and the damages, different things, that is increasing the pool's cost. So we had to do an increase to increase that. Load factor, 1% is good. It's not the best. We love to be below 1. But that means that when we have our accidents, we have our injuries, it shows that we're not having an increase. We're also having a decrease though. So we're at a 1%.
Same.
It's staying the same.
Does that say our risk is the same?
Our risk is the same. And so basically, I mean, we, we of course push safety, we try to do it a low. And not pick up police is not here. The police is one of our biggest, you know.
You get picked on.
You get picked on. They, they get, they get cars damaged in a pursuit. Or if we have a employee injured when they're fighting somebody, that happens. And so those all factor into our experience modifier. Well, 1% though does mean that we are maintaining a, the average right now. Another exciting thing that we're very excited to announce is the return of in-house permitting and building official services. So this is something that we have been talking about for quite some time. When I first started here five years ago, we had a contracted service. We did not have an in-house building official anymore. After much, much feedback from the community and after trying to do a different one, we opted to go back to an in-house person. So we're excited to have that in-house again. We will have the Director of Business and Professional Services, Brandon Bowby, over it. We will have a building official in-house with that. And we also have business license permitting specialists to assist with that. And then the second thing we're very excited about is that we are gonna be taking over recreation for the city of Hartsville. We have been with a relationship with the county for decades. We appreciate the working with them, but we felt like with the staff we have now, it is ready for us to take it over ourselves. We have the staff in place, we have the infrastructure in place, and we have the funding to handle it. So we're very excited about that. We'll go into more detail about that in a moment.
And it benefited some of the audience. That, it, it predates me, at least. Bob, I don't know if you could pinpoint how long the city has been working towards that, but it wasn't a, wasn't an overnight thing. So it's, it's, it's good to see it come to fruition, I think.
And we, and we had to take the time to prepare ourselves. So we have now hired a director who is used to doing programming. That's what we hired him for. We also have new staff that is, again, designed to do programming. So that, we've been building up to this point. And so we're very excited about the.
This would be fantastic.
We do it.
I wanted to ask a question. Do we have a deduction that is being paid, and I'm not sure what it is?
For?
Um, I have like a twenty, about 20 dollars that is taken out. And we're getting a notification asking what to go over.
It might, well, I'll have to have HR look. And that could be something from the state. So we do all our finances and stuff for any fee. And then if there's any type of issue to be taken out, we'll do it. Could have been, you might have do something for anything in October last year, change it. Let's get on, we'll talk off on it. But if any of you ever have any questions about your deductions, or especially for employees' HR. Your, your employees in that sense, without the employees.
And, and we'll be taking for the retirement.
You'll be paying for retirement and health insurance if you have it.
We have the option to have health insurance.
Exactly.
And I just want, you know, I just saw that and I, I wanted to mention that.
Sure. Okay, yeah, I'll move into the next. Okay? You have questions about this, guys? All right, moving on. So this is that COLA chart. I just wanted to show you guys how we are, cost of loading is COLA, sorry. So this is where I went back to 20, I shouldn't say 20, those dates are off, I apologize. This is 2026, 25, 24, 23, 22. So ignore that 26, I'm gonna put my cursor if you can see. So this is to show where we were. We actually were much lower. And I started tracking this actually when I first started. Pre-COVID, we started looking at the data and showing that we are trying to keep in step with CPI. We don't want, at some points, I think we've, we've gone higher than that, but you see, we're still kind of chasing that goal. So we're within 2.6% of where the southeastern CPI is. And this data comes, they predicted, March is predicting for next year, 3%, but that is really bearing right now because the market's kind of crazy. So we anticipate 3.5 will get us within, again, stone's throw of that. Any questions on that? All right. All right, this is the Parks and Recreation Transition. I wanted to dive into the details. I mentioned to you guys before, we do have a foundation donation that is coming to us. It's a one-time money. And we know we have kind of one-time upfront cost to get this thing going. So the net impact on the budget is only $18,000 this year. It will go down though, because if you look at this one-time football gear, of that 39,000, 33,000 is football equipment. So just that, that's to last for about eight to 10 years. So with maintenance and with us keeping it up, we anticipate that it is sustainable with just registration fees. So we're excited about that. One thing we wanted to make sure, that county residents will still be able to participate. It will be seamless for all county residents. You shouldn't even know a difference. You'll be registering with the city of Hartsville. We've assisted with that in the past, so we are still gonna be doing the same thing. So again, this is a long time coming. We're very excited about it. Council was pushing this for a few years, so we're excited to be able to offer to you guys this year.
And, and the county and city residents would pay the same rate?
So currently, we have, I submitted an agreement to the county council that would allow them to pay us to subsidize that. We're waiting for them to respond to that, but that would guarantee that they would pay the same. Right now, we would have, anticipating, not anticipating a change to that? Because we, again, we can offer the same, right? That's, it's possible county residents could pay more if the county does not fund us in any way.
Could they pay more now?
The county, no, we all pay the same, city county.
Pay the same then? Okay.
Yeah, and that's what we would want to do. And this was, this has been, again, this is years of conversation with the county. We've danced around numbers before. There was a number that came up this past time. We thought that was good. It does cover our costs. It also allows us to, if we felt like adding another staff member in with the money that we give, we don't need another staff member to run it, but it'd be nice. So we are very excited that they potentially are considering that, but I have not perfected that.
All right.
Are there any safety grants for football equipment?
Yes, oh yeah. There's grants we can go after. We're looking at, because we need to get started, we're gonna outright purchase this time. So if we go forward, we're gonna be looking at grants to fund these things. We need to get the program started now. That's the point. So we don't really have time to wait on that. And we have a grant from, we have a donation to cover some costs without credit.
Captain, right. Want to use some, or residents from Hartsville or Barrington County to block for football?
There's a lot of school. We got probably 30 kids. I know they play that a lot.
Yes.
But they'll, they'll come back. So we get this role of death, they'll come back. I know it's close to 30 kids, not gonna leave right now.
There'll be more.
It's, it's at least a whole team, I know, is in a different meaning at the same.
That will, that will come back.
And neither will they. And I spoke with former NFL star Tony McDaniels, this is recent, it's Sunday. And he's interested in getting involved in that endeavor.
I don't talk to him. Well, our plan is for July 1st to take it over. Any sports that are still, have started, we're gonna allow the county to finish those seasons out. But eventually, we will be taking over everything. Correct? Because it's, it's, so the ZIL operating at Byerly Park, it's our facilities, the city staff will be running. Okay? Any questions? All right. All right. Jumping into capital lease, this is general fund. I know it's a little fuzzy to read. But this is police, fire, parks and recreation, streets and grounds, and then there is some work for the museum. So the majority of it is vehicles. We are asking for six vehicles in capital lease for police. There's some barricades. We're looking at getting into more solutions for our radars and whatnot across the city. Fire, we are looking to do some renovations to the building, some furniture, a front pad where the, the truck comes out onto. We'll look at doing that. And then we also need a new staff vehicle. In the recreation, we are looking to do some painting and some new gym equipment in the facility. And also adding in a utility kind of cart, not a four wheeler, golf cart, sorry. Streets and grounds to get another vehicle and mower, tractor mower, and then also a trailer and a parking lot. We need to look at redesigning the parking lot behind, or SBC parks next to that, between them and the library. That parking lot is in a bit of disarray. It needs some attention. So we're gonna be looking at doing that. Especially with one church coming in, we want to redesign potential with it. Dungeons, rares, things like that. In total, and then plump, the addition, we're sitting, it does need some attention. We need some plumbing work done. And here, we're anticipating about a 30 grand. So on all, it's about 613 or 70,000 dollars. Last year, we did 2.2 million. So that's a big factor. 613. Any questions about these capital requests? And we'll talk more in detail about these in the different departments if you like. All right, moving on. We have more capital to talk about. This one is utilities, water sewer, Neptune Island, and then also sanitation, so funds two and eight. In water and utilities, we do, we split them up between two, but these will be cross-used across the different areas. We are looking for a new asphalt roller, new reel loader, concrete pad, water main rehab, which we've been doing throughout downtown. And then cemetery pump house, which is the cemetery water tank, a new roof. Then some lift station improvements, and then again, some more relining of roof treatments. And the water park, we are looking at $80,000 in park improvements, which is kind of general maintenance. And then finally, for sanitation, we need a new truck to pick up with the lift gate on the back that can pick up the roll carts and take those deliveries. On all that is about $560,000 for utilities and $95,000 for sanitation.
Question. On the sanitation part, Dan, you know, we did clean up about two weeks ago. And I still have some leaves that, you know, wrecked up and put them out. And they did not get picked up.
If they weren't, the bags, so if you let me know where they were, they're part of that cleanup, we can get them. But we do, we've been having them, the bag, the leaf bag program has been in place for two years now.
Right.
We are still offering bags for free. If you go down to public services, pick up the roll carts if you want one. But let, if it was part of the cleanup, let us know, we'll come get them.
All right.
But people are back. We're, we're still have some pullouts, but for the most part, people are complying with the leaf.
Yeah, and, and some people just don't know.
Sure. And, and we're happy to educate and to give them the resources they need to do it.
Because I, I told someone that they had to buy bags now.
Well, they can still get it for public services if they want.
I called sanitation and I couldn't get an answer.
Okay.
So I said, you know, I guess we'd have to buy bags.
Text me those addresses, we'll take care of it.
Oh, thank you.
Any other questions about capital lease? This next chart is just to show our payments and how they are going and rolling up, a lot rolling up in 2031. This changes as we acquire more brands.
No, hold on.
No, sorry, sorry, we're dead, not brands. You can see this is the kind of area that we're in. Any questions about that? We're gonna jump into the general fund, which is very exciting. General fund is the largest, you know, the most departments of the city. Actually, I thought I should, I should, but it is our police, fire, finance, HR. Everyone is in this area except utilities for most part. Yeah, I'm gonna skip it. All right. This is a history, which I thought was important for you guys to see. Yeah, that's a, okay. I want to show you, these are our actual, what we, the budgeted, what we spent. And we started tracking this, I tracked this from 2018 back. So the green is our revenues, blue is the expenditures. So since, really since 2019, we have every year come under budget. And what's very exciting is this past year, which are audit numbers, we have 1.1 million dollars in net position. So we really outperformed ourselves this past year. So we're very excited. This is a testament to the staff. They are keeping costs low and revenues are increasing every year, which has been very exciting to see. We've gone from a $10 million budget to a $15 million budget from revenue. So we're very excited seeing that happen. And as that, as that increases by $500, we're able to add more things to the city. This is a summary of the budgeted numbers, just to see where we're tracking. So these are what we spent. This is what we anticipated to spend. This year, we are anticipating a modest increase from 14, 923 last year to now 15, 289 in general fund. And again, those are even because it has to be balanced. We need budgeted amount, budget. Any questions about this, guys?
Previous slide is a good one.
Yeah. And we're very excited about that. It shows, again, it shows a testament to what we're trying to do here, which is keep costs low, but also try to increase our costs. The city is, if you look at these numbers, if you look at this, I mean, this chart alone shows you the city is doing quite well financially. It is healthy. Okay? This is a pie chart to explain what the, where the bulk of the money is coming from for revenue. 54% is taxes, 32% is permits and fees, so that's license and whatnot. We do have a transfer in from our utilities department, and then we do have a small sale of assets every once in a while. Not this, not a, this year, and then there go, an intergrom bunch of monies coming in from state, various states. So that's where our money's coming from. This is what I want to show you. That's all the departments in general fund, to give you an idea. And this is where most of the money's going. 39% of that 15 million is going to public safety. So we invest heavily in police and fire. And then general government is the rest of the, essentially everyone else other than police and fire. Public works is streets and grounds. So we are investing in our downtown, keeping our downtown areas clean. And it just shows you the breakdown. Airport cemetery, culture and recreation is recreation. So it just shows you where we're going. We do invest heavily in public safety here. All right. Now I'm gonna jump into each general fund and increased funds. So if you have any questions about, let me know. You do have the narrative in front of you, which explains each of the numbers I'm talking about. I'm just gonna give you the overview sheet. So please feel free to stop me if you ask any questions about it, if you had to. First up is General Administration Legal Department. This is 410. This is where the majority of everything is generalized. So our IT budget in here, legal expenses for the city in general are in here. We do have some increased expenditures across the board there. But overall, it's a very low, things are from 1.67 to 1.64 actually, we're down. Of your budgetary report. Save the page, please. There you go. They interrupt me into. Any questions on 410? Let's move on to mayor and council. A shout out to T. Span right there. A shout out to T's fan right there.
This is page twenty-eight, this is where mayor and council is.
Okay. Um, increases here, we do have, um, some increases in, uh, we did change around some of the different positions in there. And we also had to add in for the election this year, which went up. The cost for election went up.
So for anybody accusing us of giving ourselves a raise, the majority of that changes upon the election.
None of, council did not receive a raise.
No.
What, and it's, but.
You, you, council has to vote for their raise, and you guys have not voted for a raise. So you have no raises.
You don't work cola, you don't receive colas.
Get a raise anyway, so.
So, Dan, let me ask this question. So council has not asked for a raise to pass eleven almost.
Yes, ma'am. Sure.
Now, we have to ask for a raise.
Yes, ma'am.
We have to ask for a raise before our.
So you can raise your, city council can raise their salaries, it just will not go into effect until after the election.
Off the way or?
Yep. And that's, so you're not, you're incentivizing, so you're not.
Right, I understand that, but like I said, you know, um, council salary and then, um, payment system and all of that, that nuts are.
Yes, ma'am.
So, question now, time my raises. So if the council decides that next month, give us a raise.
It will go into effect this November, after September.
You stick on the law, I don't know where I'm making it, but it makes two years, two years, two, it's two years, right?
Okay.
I'll just make that comment, cause I'm, I'm still anticipating that fall action.
Yeah, we can see that. We have two staff members in here, the city clerk and director of special projects, we're in this position, so that's where that comes from. I was, uh, we have a new director of special projects, so that explains a little bit of the increase. And also, um, operating expenses, we do have to increase for the elections this year. That's right, we also do electronic document management this year.
So it's a term of increase of a election, the county, state, the county.
And their, their costs for election workers went up.
They're paying them more than incentivizes them to work for it.
So I'll increase the day of your election, include prep for the election, that too, that day, and then we have to go ahead and budget and catch this runoff.
And I thought it was interesting because we could have had a cost savings if we didn't do the early voting, but we want to tell our citizens to do early voting. But it does make, uh, is a big difference what we have to pay for early voting. But that's a, we want to early vote. Oh, it's a big job.
You know, depending on who goes vote, first time they cause, the state don't get much of a return on their investment.
You got to pay for it, we learn.
Right.
Yes, alright.
Cause I can't remember, it was at least four thousand, it might have been a war.
And this, the two people are election, it's the mayor.
One of them was seven thousand this year.
And this year, the election is the mayor and three council members, and the mayor is at large, so all public places will need to be open.
Yep.
Alright.
Would you, um, early voting?
Early voting allows seven thousand dollars.
Yeah, but I'm gonna say in our upcoming election, we have the early vote and then all the.
That's exactly right. So we did not cut it. We said, no, we won't early vote as an option.
And early voting will be at one side.
Yes, ma'am.
So it would be for all the precincts.
Correct.
Yes, correct. Okay. Any other questions about this, guys? Okay. Next up is court operations. We got a small increase. Thirty-two, and that's only, what's the one board, what's half of the board?
Yep.
This is, this is just judges.
The judges.
This is the three judges you guys employ, one of our court staff employees. Okay? Next is city manager. This includes one and a half staff, myself and assistant city manager, she's split between this and finance.
Page thirty-five.
Thirty-five, thank you. Here's Jerry Tean down there, too. Any questions? Those are my buddies. If you were in the picture, I would take it with you, too, please.
No. Oh, that's you, okay. I, I just see you.
Did I, did I blend in too much?
Yeah, 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 okay, I apologize.
Can you clarify how long we took it for ACM?
We, we budgeted for an ACM in twenty twenty. No, well, yes, the assistant city manager was, was placed before me. Um, and then the position had been there, and there was, uh, pushed to get one when it first started, but we waited.
Yeah.
We've been budgeting for at least six years.
Yes. Mary Catherine was the assistant city manager.
And for some reason, um, there was kind of a, you know, what you are or not.
Well, and the, the funny thing here is, and this is just to be, she's also the CFO and the director of water park. So it's a triple position. So the assistant city manager, she actually would probably look for the CFO somewhere else, so.
Do you have five departments here?
I do.
Yes. Every year, we, um, we additional add this responsibility to much of her shipment here.
But prior to there, um, we didn't have that.
No, we had the, um, city manager was all of our old departments. Assistant city manager before was only others, the special project.
Yeah, we had, nothing close to what we have now.
We have, we're, we're, we're very lucky. Alright. Next. Information technology, this is IT, I apologize. And, um, so you guys might recall, thirty, thank you, just shout it out. You might recall, when I first got here, we had a, we did do a big change in IT, um, in case you probably called more than anyone else, but, uh, uh, but we were able to get significant cost savings. Unfortunately, IT is rapidly growing. So this is now back to the level we were when I first started. So we had a, you can see right there, uh, or actually, it's higher than I first started.
No, but she started before that.
We just started before that, so.
Yeah, it's just because it's five years, it was retired.
We have tried to go away from that, um, thin client, which was a remote work thing to everyone having their laptop. Uh, but costs have just continued escalating. And this is, this is kind of across the board for all cities. IT is a massively growing. It's gonna be one of our biggest departments if it was a separate department. But we do contract at VC three.
Okay, let me ask you a question. My question was, the end of this, uh, this contract work or?
It is, we just renewed it. We have two more years left on the contract.
And that is one that we'll need to be going back out every, every opportunity we get for that, because it is such a big part of the budget.
We renewed last year, and so renewed again. Uh, it renewed for three years last year. So come up this year, we'll be two years late.
And, and we, um, our services that we received from them, they are up par and, you know, doing what needs to be done.
We will definitely bring this up in two years.
Okay.
We will be.
We will. We, we did attempt, we had, we had some conversations with another company that was actually more local. So we're looking to try to do a local option.
Yeah, I need to take a test or?
I know, I can get that to it, I haven't done it.
Don't click on the sales.
But it, it just, I don't know.
I know what you're talking about.
But really, the increase is gonna be attributed to cybersecurity. Um, cybersecurity is one of the biggest things. It is our, our employees, unfortunately, from cyber standpoint are. They wanna click on a link and jeopardize the integrity of our network, that's the problem. Um, so we take, that's the cost that are rising up most of it. But we have a wonderful staff member who oversees it. She does an excellent job, and she is on it. Um, so we're excited to have that. But it is something that we need to, um, look at and picture we're getting the best bang for it.
Because I, I'm looking, I'm like, quarantine, okay, well, what happened? You know, what did I do?
I don't know why they call it that.
Yeah, you know, think you did something wrong, or you, you just opened up your packet and now you quarantine, or I get my next one, or, you know.
I don't know, I get that. I get those things.
Well, I had, I had a previous IT director, I asked, I said, are you afraid of getting, you know, hacked? He goes, I'm afraid every day. I was like, well, that's great. It's, it's good for your health, you know, so. They live in fears, and that's why.
I'm listening, most recently, we had a call, Eva and I did, on an issue we had, and, um, they were very apologetic about the issue. Um, and so they do want to try to keep our business.
I mean, they're, they're a legitimate company.
Yes.
We just work through some issues.
And they're well respected throughout the state. So, um, and there are certain things with the police department, there are certain requirements that we have that are, there's gonna be a cost no matter what.
Right.
Um, that we're going to have to have.
We have to maintain certain securities so that it's so accessible and not information.
So that is why I asked the question, are, if we're just supposed to be, everything?
We are currently, we are getting everything we need by the contract. Currently.
Alright.
Okay? But this is, expect these costs to go up every year. Until we can find another vendor potentially, this is what's pretty. Okay? Finance department is again, everybody, page forty-one is, uh, essentially everyone other than all business professional services downstairs. Um, assess the majority of a good bit of our staff. We did have a decrease because we shifted. The director of business services is now fifty percent of the planning zone. So you'll see a true up on the planning and the department. Any questions? And this department not only takes all the water bill, but finance department also assistant city, but all their finances. So every department works through the finance department. So the customers are also internal as well, just to throw it out there. Human resources?
Eighty-four thousand.
We have three staff members, there they are. Um, small increase. Any questions? Next up is Main Street.
Page forty-nine.
And if you were following the news, we were just nationally and asserted accredited for Main Street, which is very exciting. We're very excited about that. Um, this is tremendous amount of work that, well done. Um, so we're very excited about getting, and we've, and again, we, we became, we were on a double secret probation for a minute, and now we're back off of it. We're not off, we're back off of it. We got off of it. And now we're actually credited, so it's a big turnaround for us twice. Yeah, it's great.
So this is our second accreditation since we.
Since then, yeah.
Almost.
Exactly. We're very excited about it. And if you saw the press release, I mean, we have ninety-seven percent occupancy downtown, downtown extremely healthy, uh, multiple new businesses starting. Um, tremendous outreach, I think, by our staff to the, uh, Main Street businesses. It is a free, if you are in the program, if you're in the Main Street district, but you stayed at the Main Street district, uh, which includes parts of, uh, South Hartsville, East Hartsville, not just their downtown. So we're very excited about what Main Street means to the city.
Yeah, I think the latest opening, um, is beside Four Friends Coffee and Ice Cream, it used to be Celebrated Boutique, is a, um, collectible card shop.
Yep, they just opened.
A lot of sports cards, maybe, poseable for accounts, sports cards. And that, I thought that was a good use, that's a tiny little space. You're limited what you can do, but that, that type of business, to me, seems well suited for it.
And that owner messaged me immediately, wanted to know, it, was there anything here? He's been trying to come for a while and hasn't been able to find a space. Um, and that's actually their third location. They have one at the beach or somewhere else. So this is their third location, and they have been trying to get into Hartsville. And when that came up, I messaged him, said, hey, this might be allocated. So they have been wanting to get here.
I recently got a big free written binder of baseball cards I had when I was a little guy. I might take them by there.
Stephen would love to look at.
Let them tell me they're worth fifteen dollars, you know, or whatever.
I need to take them to the Andy Bro show.
Excuse me, now where, where is this so called?
Uh, on college. So the barber shop, Four Friends, we used to have a big shop.
And they're right there.
Just, they painted the, the accents for blue. You'll see it when you go to East College.
That's cool. So at this point, all the only buildings that are hefty that we really know of, um, this lighter side, of course, we're still working through that with them. And then, um, there's one, our building, that's, uh, we had to work on, and then, uh, there's one more right now.
Adventure.
Adventure, yep. So we're the, we're.
Right.
Okay. Alright, moving on. Uh, planning and zoning? Peter Ben, yeah. So this, again, uh, you see a large increase. We were moving staff around to be in here. This is a big transition, a new position for building official. Well, we're trying to return it back to the business navigator, um, type of setup.
So when is that projected to be?
So it, uh, right now, we, the staff are in place. The only one we don't have is the building official, but we have, we're not gonna put it out till this budget is approved. But we are engaged with another contractor to, for a six month contract with option of a month to month to help us in the immediate.
I think you just confirmed my question. We can't do that until this council approves this.
Well, council is, if, if we're willing to, then I'd be happy to put it out today. But, um, we are, we were waiting for it to be approved. Having Safe Bill come back online, um, a little bit, alleviate some of the pressure to get this in place immediately. Uh, they have already jumped right in and are working on ones. They've already actually assisted us with two projects that were stalled, and so they have taken those over. And so we're very pleased that they are, hopefully, these projects kept moving again, and they had some slowdowns before.
Well, let's, let's talk about the possibility of speeding it up, um, not now, but, uh, what that might mean and what you can do.
I probably feel comfortable right after first read, I'd be putting it out, you know, I'm like, that'd be okay. Which is next. Yeah, so.
For me, from a budget amendment standpoint, I would be at the goal of budget amendment. We might, we're gonna have budget amendments, I'd like to.
And also, I'm realizing.
We're not gonna have.
We're not that far out.
Right, it's, it's way closer than I was thinking.
Yeah, but minimize our budget amendment, I would like it.
Um, of course, where is this codes enforcement gonna land?
So codes enforcement is still in fire, police, uh, with the transition, not fire, police, fire. With the transition, we were looking at, it made sense to keep that in place for right now. Um, but we are actually looking at that right now. That position in particular is what it needs work and land potentially, and what it would do. So that's all that it works. Okay.
New position, how much will recruit not having to pay current subcontractor?
It, it'll cost us more.
We're definitely, we won't be saving. It, it is, it is actually one of the reasons why we went with that. It is a great cost savings for us to outsource it. But when the quality is not there, we're continuing to have these issues, we're gonna front that cost.
And, and perspective, so when we first switched out, I think the building official was in the sixties or seventies. And so we're talking about the total compensation, about eighty to ninety thousand dollars for the building official back in twenty, twenty twenty. Um, we went to Safe Bill, which was sixty thousand dollars here, and they handled a majority of all that. And now we are budgeting, I think, a hundred and twenty for a total compensation for a, for a building official. And we do anticipate revenue from permits going up, which will cover that, uh, to a certain extent, but not covering the entire position. An in-house building official does cost more than a contracted. Same with an in-house IT costs more than a consultant one. But you, you have given take of that.
Well, we have an in-house building official, um, at one point in time, we had an in-house building official who was also a COVID official.
Yes, ma'am.
And.
It's a possibility.
And enforcing everything correctly, um, and there, you know, we didn't have a whole lot of having to reschedule and that type of thing. It, it ran since.
Well, I'm hopeful, I'm, I'm used to having an in-house building official, that's what I had in my past two cities, and I, I feel like with working with the city, and especially that person reporting up to, up eventually to me, it's a little easier to navigate those situations that come up, especially in a small town.
It is a difficult to fill position. That's how we ended up outsourcing it as well. We had turnover in that position, and then we could not get it filled. It is a difficult to fill position. That's why I'm thankful that Safe Bill will do month to month if we end up in a situation where it's difficult to fill it.
There, there, it's a, unfortunately, it's kind of a dying business profession. Um, it's one of those professions we're watching that will eventually need to be outsourced at some point. Um, it just takes too much to get credited, all the full licensing you need, um, because you can make more money just with a plumbing license or electrical license. But a lot of times you have retired guys who wanna have a second job, so, uh, we're saving for, you know, another chance. Um, in fact, the position, when you guys were trying to hire one here, I hired the person who came here the other year, he was free. And we took the building official, sorry. So we hired that building official, because we can pay one.
Does it warrant cold down position?
Absolutely.
Yes.
Absolutely, a hundred percent.
And needing five days a week inspection.
The biggest complaint we had with Safe Bill when I got here was we only did two day week inspections. We went to three day week inspections. With the next contractor we used, we went to five day week inspections, and those are being filled. The amount of, um, starts that we have, especially housing starts, if you recall from the previous, uh, chart I sent you guys a few years ago, we tripled housing starts this past year. And there's a lot of one in the horizon coming neighborhoods. So we absolutely need this. need this.
So when we just got back with Safe Bill, like, we went back to that contract, we told them five days, they asked what we wanted, we're not even playing this stuff, we need five days.
Next day inspection, you let them know by four o'clock, before you have a next day inspection, when we have our own person, we'll be the same setup.
It's a very hard, careful, it is a difficult position to fill, so the sooner we advertise better.
Yeah, I think that's part of our, I was thinking, to get ahead of our competition.
It's a difficult position to fill also because like, Rick Mason, others, feel like that, they're not going into that figure, and so it's almost become a lost art.
Yes, ma'am.
And when you don't, when you do that, and you don't have used a session plan, then, you know, your business, your city, you take a dive for that.
Absolutely.
Because when, when we had a building official that did codes enforcement, we didn't have all of the assistance like we have today.
Right, sure.
I mean, he was like, doing probably five jobs, and so it's, I understand that it's a hard position to fill, so we have to, in filling that position, I just wanted to say that we need to get codes where it needs to be.
Sure, I understand. Well, so we've had multiple conversations, my staff, I bet, now regularly with different contractors of the area, have almost a weekly meeting with one of them in particular, and the goal is to discuss and understand what they need, where they're coming from, we tried a new contractor, they would have, there was no reason why it shouldn't have worked, but in that, we got a lot of more feedback, I think, from, you know, because there was a big push for us to switch, even when we had the previous one.
Right.
Because there was complaints then, and there will always be complaints, you know, not sugarcoating, you're going to, this is a hard, a difficult position to do, just like this, and so we're very excited that we've gotten tremendous buy-in from the community members, Brandon has been, the director of business professional services, been reaching out, talking, the buyout there, and so the goal is to make this a partnership, the city, there's so many things that can stop a project, the city really needs to not be one of them.
Okay.
Don't look at that too. The city is, the city doesn't need to be a roadblock, and that's what we're trying to stop, we really do not want to be the red tape when people, like I said, and granted, we get blamed for things that are our fault, that's okay, but at the same time, we have the accountability when we do things wrong.
Yeah, that.
And that's, that's perfectly fine, and we're.
That right there, when we do something wrong, or we do something that we don't know that we're actually doing wrong.
Sure.
And when it's brought to our attention, then we need to correct that just at that time, and not pushing it out, pushing it out, because if you don't correct it at that time, then whoever that party is that, if we don't correct it, it pushes them into cost and loss.
Sure.
And so that's why it has to be addressed immediately.
I would like to propose we take a quick break, we're about halfway through the general fund, if anybody else has any other questions or comments.
Well, and I want to say this is a good time, we're going to call it police next, we do have a little tour outside, I guess you could say, we have the police car, it's up front that side, so we are doing a new wrap, I sent you guys the image of it, we have an example of one outside, you guys want to take a look at it personally.
Do you want to go through?
No, we'll just, you guys can take a look, then we'll come back to police after that.
Alright, good.
Let's stretch the length. We stand, reset it? Reset. Thank you everyone for your patience, I'll call it being back order, it will begin to hope safety. Okay.
I believe fire follows police.
Sure, yep, so this is a police victims advocate school resource officer department.
Great, quick, the, y'all will notice, the school resource officer is new this year this department, so we've always had it, but to help better understand our costs associated with specifically with SROs, because that is always a discussion with the school district on funding, we have officially separated it out.
So it's just a change in the way it's recorded or transparency?
Yes, so for accounting and for accounting, and to better understand that, we have officially separated it out.
We do.
And this starts on page fifty-seven.
As you recall from Capitol, we are looking at six new police cars, in addition to that, we also are going after, so the grant from Russell representative Fry's office for additional cars, so that was eight cars of the shared equipment, or six cars?
What do we do for Fry?
Six cars, so with potential, if we get those as well, I'll just add those to the, this is, we get certain areas and we can place out some other cars, but we are again, we are looking at, this is true, we have some of the areas, Chief Snodgrass has been reorganizing his department last few years to get into a more, I think, better suited for his task, and so we are, we do see some shifts in the expenditure there for employees, but if you're aware of police, any questions?
Fresh, my member, the school board chipping in on our resource officers.
So we have, we have a contract with the school board to fund, I believe it started out at seventy-five percent of the cost, the original intent there was that they're off for the summer, and then we could use them in the summertime for doing our regular policing, that's changed, so with the school calendar getting shorter or more condensed, not gonna show, getting longer, sorry, and also with summer school, they want an officer on campus, so we are close to ninety percent of the year.
Ninety-five percent.
Ninety-five percent of the year, so we have been fighting, we have been discussing with the school board, a increase to cover those costs, they do not pay for any equipment, so we have, no, they pay for a small part of the equipment, and then we do, but they don't pay for cars.
Correct.
So we hire a new SRO officer, we have to equip them with, you know, we have to pay it out of our budget to equip them and give them a car. Now, something that is, I think Barry's born, we've talked about SROs before, Chief and I've had many conversations about this, we are adamant about keeping SROs in-house, if something happens in the city of Hartsville, we're going to be there first, and so we want to make sure that we have the best, and we employ not just fresh people off the street, but seasoned employees who are out there dealing with this, because that is, not only is it the most critical, one of the most critical jobs you have to do, but those are the first image of police officers that are, these kids see, so those kids are getting a, in my opinion, the best of the best that we have, so I'm very excited about the people we have out there doing it, but we have to make sure that they are paid adequately, we want to work with the school district as best we can, and to be fair, the school district has been very receptive of talking to us, we know there's some change there with the transfer of leadership, but we are going to jump right back on that conversation with the new superintendent.
And especially as the students get older, issues in the community spill over to the school and vice versa, and have our SRO, that's our, our eyes and ears in a huge way.
Absolutely, yeah, they stop a lot of things before it happens.
Yeah.
Uh, two things.
Sure.
I see something about the SRO, I went to an academy a couple days ago, and I was pretty impressed with, actually with the SRO and the kids.
Yeah, he high fives them on the way in every morning.
Yeah, it was, it was, I have never seen that before, but it was, it was good, I was impressed.
And there's a problem, he walks with the kid, pulls him out of the classroom, and he's, he goes above and beyond there, a lot of our SROs also do, I mean, all of our officers I think, really, they do above and beyond every day, every single one of them, and it's just, I think the SROs are, it's a critical role, but our officers are doing the same thing outside the streets too, so we're going to commit to that as well.
Yeah, my second story is different from this, you know, a lot of police departments around the country, they apply for a monetary surplus.
Yep.
Do we do that?
We do, so some, we, we have, we're very, I think we've been very strategic in how we do that, a lot of our cars are surplus, we're able to, especially when that one percent modifier I was talking about, that police is back in the roots, I can talk about the car crash, the, when those cars crash, a lot of times that investment is, we can't get enough money to cover a whole car sometimes, so we will care, we're able to turn one car crash into two surplus cars.
Yeah.
And I'm starting to wonder if that's the, that's what they're deciding to do anyway, a little soon.
Yeah, and I think you know this for it also, okay, that one.
We do, we, we, you know, we're not after military equipment.
Yeah.
A lot of times the surplus stuff does talk about the MRAPs and whatnot.
Uh, yours was going to have a tank.
Oh, yeah, we don't have a tank.
No, we don't need a tank.
Do you want one? Just probably get one. No, we, we want to make sure that we have the tools to make sure our officers are safe, and there are situations where we do need a vehicle that can enter into a premise without hurting our officers, absolutely, but I understand completely, the perception of military equipment is that it's something that we have to be capable, you know, be careful about, but I think they would do a good job, no matter what we have.
And one thing I want to, which you asked about what we get from the school district from that, this year we have budgeted three hundred and sixty-five thousand that we will receive from the, from the school district, and this is where having the separate department helps, right, because now I can see what I have loaded for SROs on the expense side, excluding capital for them, is five hundred and sixty-two thousand, and if they're, we're being utilized by the school district ninety to ninety-five percent of the time, and we're only getting three sixty-five, and it costs five sixty-two before capital, right, so it is, it is very expensive.
So I would have heard you talk to your counterparts on the school board, because that's once ultimately they're going to make the decision, and we've had conversations with them before.
Especially now, why I'm wondering is currently the President and State School Board Association, because school safety is like they're talking about.
And we want to be there to help, we're, we're going to continue to do it, so it's not a question, but it is nice to be able to cover what we need.
And the other thing I wanted to bring up is, you know, at one time, it was thought that we need the MRAP to be able to transport thirty kids, MRAP's not going to do that.
Yeah.
So what I suggested, and what I said at the time was, if there was an actual situation, you need to be able to match whether.
Sure.
Now, the distance, we need to be able to reach the same distance as they should be, when you respond, you have the distance to be able to take that, shoot it out.
Okay, there you go.
Yeah.
It's the service.
What's some of that with debt service?
So that's the payment for capital from before.
So that's capital that they purchased in previous years, so the cars will pay to people over five years as capital lease, so that increase this year is from the cars and the equipment they bought last year for capital.
All of that chart I showed you, up to thirty, twenty-two, thirty-one, those costs every year.
Same thing for fire department, same thing.
That's accurate.
Same thing for every department that does.
Good, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay.
Is there, Mr. Dan?
Name?
Is there on our ressession work sheet?
Miss, which sheet are you looking at?
The city prosecutor, res- ressession.
No, that's not in there. Our next up is fire.
Page sixty-eight.
So we're in line with the safety increases, debt service you see went up, we have a new fire truck. So getting less capital this year, but we are, we're doing debt service for a new fire truck now. And we were able to find some reductions in operating expenses with the, with the help of our new chief, we appreciate that.
He did a great job, and I respect the budget, he was really good, I appreciate it.
First budget. Okay, any questions, guys?
Yeah, how's the salary benefit compared to surrounding counties or?
So we, we are often looking at that in conversations with departments, right now there is a push, especially with police, the salaries, we're trying to see where we line up, so we can make adjustments as we go, as we need to, really what I'm trying to do is actually look at what our total, the total benefit of working here is versus maybe another city, so in addition to salary, we also offer a merit bonus, these are one-time fees, a merit bonus, a Christmas bonus, and a vacation sellback every year, in addition to that, we also historically have offered COLAs from three to five percent every year. So when you compare us to, say, Florence, if you look at your actual take-up, because they don't, Florence County does not offer those things, we're relatively safe, now there's still room to go, like, so, and I, I look at Florence, even though I love Florence, I look at them as our Florence competitors, so we try to keep up with that, but we're looking at that, fire's the same way, to make sure that we're offering it, of course the difference between uncertified, certified, we did have a reduction because again, we had some changeover, so they are still giving the three and a half percent, a little bit of two percent for you, we had some savings because of different positions being changed.
And I think I've said it, I've probably said it in the public meeting before, we're competing with Florence, Florence is competing with the beach.
Yeah.
So the beach is paying better than the abdominal effect, and it's just a rat race to, got to keep up.
Correct.
To maintain your staff.
And I want to say that we've been keeping up well, because I can remember a time when, when we got new officers, they'd be with Hartsville for a year or two, and they were gone to the county.
Well, it's, it's a, the biggest thing happened in the state, up there's patrol, the state patrol to fifty thousand as it starts salaried, that created dominant effect two years ago, Chief, come on?
Yes.
And since then, everyone's been pushing and doing and changing and everything for now, what's interesting is that we had to do a push, but not as big as some other people did to get that gap, because again, historically, we have continued to rise, so over the next five years, our employees will end up much higher than these other people, because they don't do, take any pushes that much, so we're going to continue to grow, but again, I still want to be competitive and make sure that we're not losing people just for, I want to be competitive, so we do look at that often, that's something that we're often looking at, especially with our budget, that's why we do adjustments as needed.
Yeah, that's something we have to, like I said, continue to do, because if we don't, then we lose.
Well, if you're, if you're paying consulate, have to train new officers, you're, so we don't want to be the, although as much as I love being known for, you know, a wonderful department that does produce amazing officers, it's tough when they keep on going to places.
Yeah.
Lower tech, so.
Okay, good, Daniel, we're talking about trucks and cars, how about the equipment for our guys, our firefighters, our police officers?
We just do.
We'll make sure that they're equipped.
Absolutely.
Safety is utmost.
Absolutely, so on the fireside, we did just get all the new self-contained breathing apparatuses, we ordered them, rather, that was last year's budget, four hundred something thousand dollar purchase, we are reviewing our current bunker gear, make sure that's all disposed, so that saves because we had some extra built in, so they are getting the equipment they need to do it, same with fire, same with police, and we, we go after grants as often as we can, Russell Fry's office, again, we're going after appropriations for new equipment in addition to cars.
Two or three years ago, we had one, one nine-one-one, we had the radio.
That's, that's on the line, well, right now, we can do the eight hundred megahertz little hall, that is in this budget, is enough for fire?
So that's fully funded by a grant for police, but for fire, we did include it in this budget, because there haven't been as many ground to ensure our department for that.
And those radios are about four grand a piece, but then we can do flashing to bring them up to what they need, for much cheaper, so we're including in this budget is all fires getting, their own, raiders getting flashed.
Was it Representative Mitchell that helped us with police?
He did, yep. Hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollars? Close to that, it's Mitchell helped us with that, so.
Thank you, code, Eddie. Back to you.
Yes, sir, but no, we constantly look at, and that's something, conversation we've had, police side, we're not trying to steal fires thunder, but with police, we talk about that with the rest of the roads too, we want to make sure they have the equipment they need.
Absolutely.
And it's typically a conversation with the school district. Most recently, Chief, is that where we have the gun safes are now available in the schools?
Yes, sir.
So that was a big push we had, we wanted to have, again, matching, match, unfortunately, matching shot for shot, we now have secure, security gun safes in the schools that the officers have all the access to, in event something were happening. Okay, alright. Next, we got our marketing communications department.
Page seventy-four.
This is tourism, communications, public information, special events. Any questions there?
Mr. Bud.
Alright, next up, this is our operations department, so this is one that we've been kind of tinkering with quite a bit, this is our facility maintenance manager, he has also another employee, I think we've gotten it finally, it's funny what the costs are, so you can see we did have a little savings there.
Page seventy-eight.
Just interrupting. Just, just interrupting.
That's Phil.
Yep. So this gentleman takes care of all facilities, keep it up, Scott.
Joe.
Joe Sanders.
It's not just him.
And, and.
Right. It's got two people.
It's two people.
But he works out of the public service department.
That's two people.
It's two people, he works out of the public service department, but he isn't the general fund, yeah. That's right. Got any questions? Parks and Recreation?
Page eighty-one.
Eighty-one?
Yes.
As you can see, we have that increase, uh, for factoring in us taking it over for that decision. And we got it.
Three years.
So we invested Parks and Recreation.
They're a chance to assist with us taking it over and going back to like a community commission maybe, submit all the bid.
And I did, I actually got that question the other week, would we be starting a committee, because someone was wanting to volunteer on it. So I will be talking to Kendrick about that.
Well, we have a Parks and Recreation Commission, are you talking about the, and it's advisory, advisory board, not a commission, so.
Someone asked, would we be starting something separate, because we're thinking on this.
Um, I think it'd be a good conversation for us to have about what the new role potentially be of that, because it's an advisory committee. Now, there is a Parks and Recreation kind of, uh, there was by nineteen fifty's, it was not a taxing authority, but it had a commission. So, um, and I've required the legislators about, you know, what do you take to re- allocate that, uh, or re, to reinstate it. Uh, I think that's the conversation we need to have, if you guys want to change the scope of their work, want to talk about a separate commission that does a commission, that actually does something, has more authority, that's up to you guys. I think, uh, staff is very capable of handling it, but certainly, we love getting input from the committee.
Did y'all have something like that in the past that you had in mind, or it was just something you were curious about?
I was just made aware of the formal commission in my conversations around.
Got it.
But I, I just like the idea of more involvement, I feel like the more people we have involved helps the staff.
Sure.
Yeah.
With the marketing aspect and things like that, that's my personal opinion.
Sure.
And the county used to have a county recreation, because that's where we would get the part money and we'd help allocate.
Gotcha.
The part money at that time. And so I don't know if, if we get Iowa, Oregon gets theirs, or who gets theirs now, or if the county gets it, and they have to deviate or what.
We, we apply to the, over there, so we wanna do part money to the.
No, I do think that buying helps, I always say that's why Hartsburg does so well, and I think National is successful too, because when you have volunteers, they're definitely passionate about it, so.
They're gonna give and accept it.
That's right.
I think that would be good, to have them somewhat involved, because it alleviates the burden and some.
I just think it's, I, I think it's important to remember, you know, when you're looking at that, because that would be, you have a group that is doing some, to some capacity of that, which is the advisory committee, um, it's a good thing to start from, maybe? Because they are volunteers who give their time.
Hey, staff, these are all volunteers.
Yeah. Still wanna overstep them.
Right.
And the regional recreation commission was to get recreations established in Hartsburg.
Gotcha.
Yeah, there was one at one time, it's many years back.
It does help to get volunteers.
It's great.
Right, it is a great way to build those connections and have coaches, which is what we're always desperately looking for.
And that's what we just designated for.
That's absolutely right, that's what I was thinking, to get that buy-in for coaches.
You could change it from advisory committee to a commission or something like that.
Because at first, we had Parks and Recreation, then added to, um, the bathroom.
I just see staff giving looks, it's pretty fun right there.
I'm on your side.
He's out, he's out.
He knows, he knows his stuff, he's on volunteer coaches, he gets it, he gets it. He's having, he's volunteered for his kids since they get it.
Oh, yeah.
Okay. All right, guys, anything else on Parks and Recreation? Any other questions about the transition, um, I think we should be, we covered it pretty well. Okay. And next up, almost done with general fund, we got streets and grounds, um, this is the, one of our most visible crews out here.
Eighty-six.
Eighty-eighty-six.
Fortune.
It's our streets and grounds department, we've had some, you know, moving things around and whatnot, so. Capital to go down, also that, that different.
Because we got the street super.
Is that?
That was a free super last year.
And that is, I think, um, really creeping benefits, the roads it's going down, it really is making a difference, and that streets, it's really nice.
And y'all see, they have a lot in their capital section, they have multiple things this year, they are past it. Streets and grounds need to, and, um, one thing we have that complimenting on is that here in Silver Town, we wanna keep it up and do even better. And so they are overdue for some investments in equipment. And that's why you'll see, even though they don't have the street super this year, we did push through some things to try to help that.
New mower retractors.
Right.
They split some deferred stuff.
They need it, they need it.
They typically were always the one that got them, left.
They never get them big off, they never get them truck.
And we are planning on doing some work in the roundabout, things like that, so we, we have things on the horizon, just for when they're doing their maintenance and stuff. And we did have quite a few people out, um, just to pass work and do, uh, work with and do, so. We're back full steam down there. Okay. All right. Go ahead. We pay on those, um, uh, I don't think I posted, a couple of years ago, the South Carolina Association of Mayor's, I heard you mentioned, and a direct, direct feedback, it's like your demo's great, correct? So thanks to all the people involved in that. Okay, next up, we have museum.
Page ninety-one.
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 Um, I did have immediately, uh, let's just hear the Kente server, we spoke to, what was his name, Keystone Speaker? Robinson?
Tom Crawford?
No, uh, Bobby.
Isn't that Bobby Don?
Bobby Don, yeah. And I requested he bring back in the, um, there was the South Carolina Civil, Civil Rights Movement.
exhibit.
Exhibit, and he said he'd be interested in doing that again.
Pretty good. Well, nevermind.
He grew up with a guy like me, so we're best friends.
How was this up? Okay. Camera's rolling.
It's rolling.
Yes, it is rolling.
Let me be quiet.
Any questions about museums, guys? All right. I think I might have a, a few guys. We, I mentioned it before, so we do have a, the, the capital for the addition for the plumbing issues, uh, we had some more pack outs in. There's some recent filtration, we are redoing, doing a new line, and I think we're changing it from two cleanouts to one.
We're, we're tying into one line.
Yeah. So this is.
We constantly have down here fixing it, and we appreciate that, but it's not done.
No one's used the bathroom for it. Um, no, we, when we have big events and there's a lot of people here, it can leave some issues. And my staff, the staff has been amazing about keeping it up, but it's time to do something, so it's thirty grand to do some work in here. We will have to dig into the floor to fix this, just that way.
Fun, fun.
Fun, fun. Okay. Uh, next cemetery operations.
Page ninety-five.
So this is just the maintenance of the contract, right?
Yes.
This is the contract for, um, Green Lawn and Magnolia.
And we put this out for real.
Is it out for bid right now, Brandon, or is it?
Not right now, uh, it will be from, um, actually the year, next year.
And last time, we did only get one bid again, so.
Just tell your friends.
Where does the upkeep for Marion Avenue?
That's out of Fort Tenny, about.
Except for that another thing, the streets and grasses, now they're gonna be more with all the improvements.
Once we get a handle on that, I'll take person.
My project, to find the money. It's not what it should, right?
We're talking about the maintenance of, now, now Marion Avenue Cemetery, uh, it's going to go up because we just added quite a bit of.
I just wonder what Peter Cleary, he's on there, but it's not in there, is it?
Because I got this, I got Johnny and this added it.
Johnny's the right one.
I don't care, I like that picture.
It's showing money, it's showing.
Excuse me?
We're adding upkeep into this nature.
No, we already have upkeep every year of the budget for upkeep of Marion. Uh, what we're saying is that we do anticipate that cost going up with the addition of a rose garden and other things like that.
Which maybe we can have streets and grounds try to help us some with that, to save that cost. I'd love to not have to up our contract for that.
Staff is looking at us, I guess.
So that's, that's, that's in another budget.
Yeah, we need to, we'll get a fair amount of cost of what that increased, we don't know that.
Because the contract we have is not included, and then, like you said, it's just.
No, this is, this is just a, if, look at the picture, but don't look at the picture, it's just Magnolia and, um, Green Lawn.
Do we own any of the equipment? Yeah, we currently don't need equipment for eighty-sixty-nine.
Oh, that's okay, we do.
No, we don't, that's all hers. Hers being the contractor.
So, so Danny, I had a question or concern, um, about Magnolia and Green Lawn. And I explained to them that it's not decided, that it's a contract that does help people to take it.
If they do, but they do work for the city, so, I mean, ultimately, I mean, I'm not trying to disshertain people, we are responsible. So if there's an issue, let us know.
All right.
And, and Brandon is over that, uh, because it's sort of, you need anything?
More, more.
Let us know. He's got a lot, he's got a lot. But if you have any issues, let, let me know, we'll fix it. Absolutely, they, they work for us, I think contract work is not, just like with the affiliate official, they work for us.
Yeah.
We're responsible.
If there was some interest in starting new company for the Green Lawn.
Sure. Well, the goodness of Green Lawn, we've had some tremendous work out there. Campbell Street is slated to be paved.
Okay, that's my one question.
As soon as, um, we, we did contract with the local builder there, uh, we're waiting for them to get that on the schedule. So as soon as that will be paved and take care of all that.
Start any day now.
Any day. And then, if you've gone out there, you've seen the increases, and then the wonderful sign that's out there, we are putting up two American flags on each of those. Uh, Magnolia is also getting some attention now, the gates have been fixed in the back, we were fixing the gates in the front and making those, uh.
We've got some of the internal signage of, um, Magnolia and Green Lawn. And the other ones are rusted and polished apart.
And then, uh, Marion Avenue Cemetery, the CTC did agree, and it's again, to pave, uh, put that on their pavement, uh, so we all married and we paved, and we are gonna be working on a big parking area as well.
So they, both, um, Magnolia and, um.
Green Lawn.
Men, they have friends.
Yes, Green Lawn is not.
Green Lawn is now.
It has, it has a vested barrier, barrier. And we added additional, it's very, it's a barrier. It's a technical term, I think.
Questions?
It looks good.
It does work out.
The only problem with Green Lawn, you couldn't fence in Campbell Street. We couldn't get a, a track, we, we actually have to use it to access street line gray, and based off the position, you couldn't visit it.
But I did check, um, for Marion Avenue right now, we have seventeen thousand fifty-four, the contract we have currently for them, and that's on page ninety in maintenance contracts.
But that contract is just to, it cuts the inside, the cemetery.
Right.
Not even the external.
And we're still gonna need to rely and heavily on volunteer work.
Yeah.
So the volunteers go out there, um, and then we pick it up, and then clear it.
See, well, Stephen is a great armer, I mean, I feel like Stephen is gonna be great, that rose garden?
Even if he don't design it, so.
He's got a lot.
That's our, our, okay, any other questions about cemetery?
It's great, we went out here today.
It is, if you have been up to Marion Avenue, the rose is green right now, it's beautiful, wait, we're just waiting on the bench?
The bench is here, we need to install.
Okay, the bench is here, we need to install, and we are planning on our.
We'll be having the.
Groundbreaking.
The special community event, I'll do the seventeen, eighteen part.
Is it Tuesday, I believe?
Tuesday, you're welcome.
That would be right around this grand.
Right, two days before.
Okay.
This is going to the press box, it's, uh, flooding.
On Marion?
They have flooding on Marion.
Way on Marion.
Way on Marion.
But they should, uh, we're on Marion.
CTC is only paving from A Street now.
A Street now.
To, to the end of the cemetery. They're not doing East Marion.
Okay.
They're just doing, they're doing up to the graveyard right now.
That's right.
From A Street, you turn from A Street?
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Yeah.
It's that one block.
That's it.
It's a flood, they got puddles down there too.
Would that, I mean, puddles would be addressed.
It is, well, being on new, uh, development, it is, it should take care of.
We're, and we will hear about it at this point. And this is airport, um, we have been speaking with the contractor, they agreed to keep the price the same for this year. Airport, what page, Jesse?
Six, ninety-seven.
Ninety-seven.
So probably.
All right, any question with the airport? The runway project, uh, they have million, they're a million now, they're hauling off the roof, Brandon?
Yeah, they're in the process of laying the aggregate base, but I'll have to draw the map, we're gonna write down what we add, profit till the end of this month.
Excellent.
And what accounts for the big draw?
That runway, because this year we had to pay for the.
It's two hundred thousand match, or, it's five percent match for us.
So they resurfaced it out, we have rehabilitated.
The redo, the tired, tired runway, yeah. Four point, four billion?
Yeah, that's good, so.
Five point two.
Five point two million.
At all?
And what's the timeline for that, like, up to twenty?
We should have that done, we'll do a body of this month. Should be done later.
All of us.
Yeah.
What, all of us?
That company extension.
Does not cover extension.
Give it up.
It's not a national company business.
All right, and with that, that is the end of general fund. Any questions about general fund before we move on, we can save this for the air. We're at one fourteen, so we can do enterprise fund, am I, we're two related, okay? All right, this is Warren.
It's on page, um, one hundred.
All right. So again, this is the summary of the actual costs, so you can see that we, where costs are going up. Um, this year, this is the increase we talked about, we've had a lot of repairs we have to do. Um, this is on the sewer side, um, we had historically the same contractor for years, and we switched, and we switched again. Uh, US Water is our contractor for the water treatment plant, wastewater treatment plant. Uh, we have noticed a significant amount of deferred maintenance, and so we've been taking care of that now.
And that's all the wastewater treatment plant?
That's all, and that's all the pump stations, everything.
Pump stations.
Uh, please, those two.
Lift stations.
Lift stations, yeah. Pump stations, yeah. Yeah, lift station. It's pumping.
It's not pumping all about it.
I could talk all day about sewer. Okay, so that's the summary of actuals, this is our budget. Again, increase. Now, if you noticed, if you guys are paying attention, this does not condense for state law, but we try to, so. Two thousand each on it. This is my, our pie chart, showing where the money's coming from. This is charges, we call it charges for our sewer, sewer water rents, that's what we call it, but charges for water service, charge for sewer, so it's pretty easy to split. Sewer is our higher performer, just always been, we have more sewer.
Yeah.
Marginalized and, this is the revenue, so we do know sewer.
We may have alligator water, right?
Yeah, we're serving.
That's right.
Yeah. And we have, we historically must, we reach out with our sewer board, and for part of, because of the relationship with the county and their water authority. Uh, and then twenty-four percent of that total budget is water park, the salines, and then metalies. Okay. Yeah, if we lose internet, we're still paying, so. All right. Uh, this is the expenditures, um, so this is offering expenditure for all of them, that we do transfer money by calculation to general fund. Sours and benefits, debt service, paying off those capital leases in the disney camp for this year. All right. It is letting me down. All right, this is just water and sewer, uh, we separate out empty miles, so you guys can see a breakdown of that. But this is our expenditures for water and sewer for this year.
And these details are on page one oh four, for this, these two departments.
Historic, I mean, this is, uh, this is money every month, it's a pre-stable. Historic, I mean, this is, this is money every month, it's a pre-stable budget. We just again had increased deferred maintenance that was put off for years. Okay, next up, we're gonna jump into the water park, dive in.
And that starts on page one fifteen. Oh, one fifteen.
We wanted to see, just see where the money is, expenditures are going directly for that. Again, one of our biggest things is temp personnel and the debt service we pay for every year. It's four full-time staff, and then we hire, there's maybe about two hundred kids every summer.
Are the lifeguard, uh.
Lifeguards, Savannah House.
They compensate for them currently?
Oh.
Yes, are you looking for a job?
I mean, you could be a great dispatcher.
I'm whatever, I'm dealing with the show.
The dispatcher gets around the slot tower.
Dispatch, dispatcher.
Will it be a dispatcher?
No.
Oh.
That's a bartender.
You could be a bartender. Or a Savannah house.
Yeah, oceanography background.
We are in our seventh season.
Eight.
Eighth season, we just completed seventh season, so going to our eighth season.
What's up, you, Dan?
May seventeen.
It's seventeen, it's Saturday, that season pass holder opening day, and then Sunday will be regular open to everyone. We'll still be weekends only until I believe the beginning of, I believe even earlier this year, I believe it's in May. So the school schedule actually helps us in a way, because August is a huge drop, because everyone's back in school mindset. So with them pushing it, you know, closer earlier and earlier, it actually helped us out, because we see such a big drop in attendance in August. June is our biggest month, everyone is excited for the summer. So, we're getting there, right now is the push, push, get everything done. Our last day is always Labor Day. It's always Labor Day, we, we go to weekends only once school is back in session, because we have no staff.
I've done that before, but I think it's, to me, I don't think it's great, to try to come up a way to, uh, raise the, earn money from the water park.
Completely labor.
For adults.
I know.
Yeah, we've, we've talked about that, and then we have the new splash pad, and I think we'd like to get another year or about, determine what it would be. Because we kept it open longer, the splash pad, it didn't have much interest in August.
Yeah, no, no, not for adults, I ain't talking about kids.
He wants, he wants something for the adults, he has made a fair pledge to me before, he wants something for the adults.
Then I had it about five months, but the week before.
Yeah, he wants adults to be able to enjoy it.
Well, we, we probably need adult lifeguards, that's, that's the problem. The, the main issue.
If you have a luau, you can have a luau, I, I told the luau.
Well, the main issue, and we run into our times, we need a certain number of lifeguards even open the park.
Yeah, I've heard that, but the water runs all year.
That's it, that's, that's absolutely right, the water's still there, you could still fall in it, Pete.
Yeah. If you're not doing anything with water.
That was the problem that we had, because the lifeguard situation.
Yes.
Yes.
Was nationwide.
We had a lifeguard shortage nationwide.
Absolutely.
Yeah, yeah, sure.
I think the later along is twelve lifeguards.
But you can't, you can't.
Now, I think it was just the splash pad area, that one, we do have a fence for that.
You could have an adult splash pad.
No, 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 you don't, you don't, a water thing gotta run, if they gotta run, it's a beard and wine.
Pete, I'm gonna mark on it, Pete, hey, I'm gonna mark on here, adult only, Pete. Pete, I hear you, I'm gonna mark on it, Pete.
I'll be there, Pete.
Yeah.
I think Saturday's ready to go, oh, cute.
More questions about this pie chart? This is that breakdown of expenditures. We, we did temp personnel increase.
Oh, that goes on salary.
We, and you see the increase for temp personnel, that is temp personnel, we have to pay more than McDonald's. That's, that's the.
Absolutely.
Well, I mean, one percent of the.
Right, that's in the eight percent of, I actually thought it was not right.
And we did that, we do have an air, a small air on that, we're gonna be correcting that for.
It's not a hundred percent.
It's not a hundred percent.
I believe it's five.
Five percent.
And that really, I think a big piece of that is going to be the slot tower area, like I said, we're eight years in, I don't know how we're already, you're eight, you'll see the slides are fading. We keep putting off minimal maintenance all night, but I am over it.
Time to do your slide.
So, I have tried to put off as long as I can, eighty thousand is minimum for that water park. I mean, yeah, that's bare minimum, I think that's all I can give, and we're gonna be lucky if that does it with pumps and everything else out there, to get by with eighty. But we try to keep it as long as possible. Eight years, I just can't believe it.
They get the water park, they just design, they get the water park, they just design and keep our, our emissions low, so that anyone can afford it around here.
Yep.
And it meets its debt obligation every year. Okay, next is sanitation.
Can we skip around in the budget book a little bit, so you'll have to go to page one thirty-seven for sanitation?
And this is jumps because of capital, so when we do purchase a truck, those trucks are extremely expensive. So, and we're not buying a new truck this year. We just have, what was the fifth percentage of shit, capital? Oh, the, the lift gate truck, sorry, a hundred thousand dollar lift gate truck. But as you can tell, we, we do keep, when we do have that, our revenues are higher than our costs, considering, for the most part. Ever since twenty twenty, really.
Yeah.
And this is a big change, it's the change that we've made that made a difference in our issues, you know, because we were, you can see if we continue the same trajectory, we were within, so we had to make some changes to the program. This is the, this is the budget comparison between the two. Again, you can see we are, it is steadily increasing that's capital, we did a big purchase in twenty twenty-four, three, twenty-four. For the truck front leather. Okay, any questions? Move on to my favorite chart. It's very complex, this is where the money comes from, we have commercial and residential. That's it. But what has been interesting is that they used to be fifty fifty. Commercial is starting to, or push a little bit higher, so we're starting to make attention to that. And we have often, we do have to go outside, we are still trying to look at that constantly, keep our rates for commercial sanitation comparable to the better, so. Any questions about that?
Is recycling this.
So sanitation offers commercial, residential, yard, trash pickup, recycling, and yard waste, that's all in there. We only charge for commercial and residential, so we do not charge anything for recycling, we don't charge anything for yard waste. To be clear. Recycling, you pull up recycling costs this every year, you know, we have to pay some note. So we pay and take it, just open it up to. And I believe, because then we take co-mingle, and they have this, it's like six thousand.
Six thousand.
Six thousand dollars.
And recycle roll carts, eight thousand.
And yard waste, again, the changes we made have saved that program. So we're able to offer still yard waste, and I would say we have that compliance is pretty in the nineties percent, so we still have some.
Outside matters.
If you need more roll carts, we can help. Yes, sir.
I understand, why don't we pay some note of it, take the piece of.
So recycling has changed a lot in the last ten years. Used to be able to, used to be able to make some money off of it, the way it was done, that's why a lot of programs did it. China shifted how they were accepting goods from us and the price of oil. So now, the only thing that actually has some value is cardboard, truly. Plastics, you have to collect a lot of it, and then it has to be separated. The fact of the matter is that we just co-mingle it so that someone has to pay to separate it to get the goods out. If we did single stream, not single stream.
If, we're doing single.
We're doing single stream, if we did.
If we sorted at MRF.
Yeah.
We would still have to pay, we just would have to pay what? Yeah, I noticed, and they recycled it, did no glass.
No plastic.
No plastic, did.
No surf, only surface.
Plastic.
Starphone. Plastic bags get shredded in the machines, you know, timber and everything.
I actually seen, I guess a city employee, the left guy dumps up in there, illegal, use the wrong term, they got you. And he's not, and he knows, he reaching, pulling back, I'm like, okay, I know, but I got that, you pulling back.
That was just an audit, it wasn't legal, right?
Yeah, yeah, I paid, I paid.
No, we, we do put it out there, because they dump it, they can see, and we have to keep it separated. Same thing like for instance, our yard waste, we can't take commercial demolition, because if they see that at the dump, they charge us. So we have to make sure, that's why you can't put like timber, I mean, construction demolition with your yard waste. A lot of people don't understand that, because it does technically go to the same place, but not really. So it's important, we, we have to keep it separated for every year. But recycling, if we were able to just do cardboard, we potentially could sell it for a profit, but.
Yeah.
It's a service we pay for.
But the old thing to me is, like, me as a homeowner, putting, say, if I had, um, a two, I would probably want to need a special pickup. Anything that you need a special pickup on, you need to call, so you can make sure that they get you. But a landlord, when he brings a tenant, the city's not gonna pay for that. So the landlord is responsible for his tenants.
Heads and beds, people staying on hotels, we're very interested to see what happens when Center Theater opens, that way they can start getting some stuff in there. But you can see it's remained about that two hundred thousand for combination, but hospitality just continues to grow.
Do we have any indication of whether or not the half of the Hintonian being closed might be later going now?
It, it's possible, yeah, well, last year we noticed a pretty big draw.
Okay.
I think it's about half.
And I think they just put the windows back in, so.
What about Fairfield?
Fairfield, this, this is our three hotels, so, well, we have one, three, Landmark isn't sitting, correct? So we have Landmark, then we have the Hotel Paulian, then we have Fort Worth on Fifth Street.
And even Oak Manor.
Oak Manor, so all those factors in, because it's the combination, so people have to be staying here. Well, Dave, we have Mendison, when we have shutdowns, that's what.
Airbnb too.
An Airbnb, yes, if they were.
Yeah.
Craig left.
We have, we have Airbnb, yeah.
We're done. These are the last years, these are just.
These are budgets.
So either the budget, yeah. Either the actions.
No, that's budget.
What do we?
That's budget.
So, if you ask, if you ask a question, Miss Karen?
Yes.
Let's look at race weekend.
Yeah.
Martin Harris weekend.
Yep.
Is there a, a same amount, kids and kids there is one more in the other?
So I.
I would imagine the race, well, I don't know, people bring a lot of campers for races, I could be wrong.
A lot of campers go for it, so I did, I had pulling a date on that for self-revenue, and I was anticipating doing it for the accommodations. So applications were due yesterday.
Yeah.
We are still, we're going through those right now. And so I offered, in fact, one of the race, marketing people reached out to me, quite managed for her.
Was it, well, just get over that picture for you?
Yes, true.
Accommodation.
Accommodation, yeah, this, this round of accommodations, right.
Boy, I don't see.
For her.
Sorry.
She's, oh, she.
Did you got here, Jim?
I don't know.
Well, we're here, it's dinner time, when is that, Bill?
Okay.
That meeting will be May fourteen.
Next Wednesday, they got their stuff in.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know.
She was first applicant.
This is, this is just something that we can do, and I offered it in the last video, I was, and this is from Placer, so it's our, I'm gonna pull up the big screen, just.
But that heat map yesterday that he sent, this is out of Placer too, the info he sent yesterday for that too?
Yeah.
This is out of Placer as well, the same software.
So, I did the, we wanted to look at the race weekend, and see where people came from. So that's the unit we were looking at, that's the racetrack. And then we started looking at how many people came, so six, sixty-three thousand visits to the site, forty-six thousand unique people with cell phones were there for that week. And this is only eighteen and under, so there's, there's kids there, it's not counting it, average time they spent was about two hundred and sixty hours.
Twenty minutes.
Minutes, yep, two sixty hours long, so that's a big push, that's the race, and then it's windows down pretty steeply. This is, you can't see as well, I'm gonna kind of spread it, so the red is the, the route they took to come in, which makes sense, they're coming from a direction, mostly from the highway coming in. And then, this is where they went before and afterwards. So people came in from Buc-E's, but then this is where they went after the, after the race. But, Buc-E's is number one, look at that one. Where's Boss Hogs?
It's across the street, I think, probably a track.
So it's an original raceway grill, so you can see where people went, and I can run this for any date, in any event.
So, excuse me. And I have a question, how can they identify the persons on eighteen and under?
So it's, it is tracking the cell phone data, I'm sure they have the data for people under eighteen, but it's filtered.
Well, I think the carriers know the account holder, what. Oh, it's, so they, if I, if I got a phone in my, my, they got a kid, with the phone, it might make it track that, yeah, okay, yeah, it's not a true act.
This is the kind of heat map where they, visitors by origins and where they came from, so really right around here, and these are, that's drawn to county, so that's, that's Hartsville. That's just the heat map, not counties, I'm sorry. And then this is where they, zip codes, where they came from. So four hundred, like forty-four to forty-one people attended to the race.
Well, it'd be interesting to take two nine five five, that one, two nine five three two versus other.
Yeah.
Long haul those other ones together.
It goes into household income, based on the average income is about a hundred thousand, eighty to seventy.
Where is that, the, the race?
This is the average income of the people who attended.
What's that?
This is a hundred fifty to two hundred over here, one fifty to one point five, sixty to seventy-five.
Yeah.
And then lower. Ethnicity?
Ain't no brothers, by the way. Where?
Twenty-four percent.
Twenty-four percent.
Well, we're here, as we can. I mean, it is, yeah.
It is, I'm gonna run, I'm gonna.
It is not any so good for us.
I'm gonna, I'm running it for that too.
Really go see those numbers.
Sure.
Because we had the Black Vipers weekend a few years ago, and they had like fifty thousand Vipers come through. They booked out every hotel, but they did not do a whole lot of money expenditure, for some people closed their establishments because they had.
I'll run it for, I'll run it for that, I think that's.
And I, I just noticed this is in spring race too, so the numbers for the Labor Day race.
I'll run it for that, so this is, and for kind of vehicles, this is also, I ran for Center Theater when they did Little Mess. So I sent this to their, so this is Center Theater, I did fifteen hundred feet from their location, coming in, I'd pretty much all downtown, well, in fact, they're on downtown. So this is Little Mess in twenty twenty-two, or twenty-four, twenty twenty-two. Twenty, one thousand unique visitors, thirty-four thousand visits to it, again, all above eighteen, so none of that, none of the participants have gotten here. This was how it came in, what they did. Where they came from, a lot of them coming from north and south Hartsville, which is interesting. I thought one of the most interesting ones was where they went, so that is Sally's Beauty Shop.
Has brought.
That's what they wanted to do, look at Sonic popping in there. So we're talking about forty point two percent foot traffic who left from there, so out of the thirty-eight or thirty-two thousand people, four point two percent went to Walmart. Just rub the YouTube, the rubber numbers, you know.
Make up some Walmart money, just make up their hotel size.
That's right. What I did find interesting is that zip code wise, forty-five percent were from two nine five five F. So forty-five percent of the participants from that are from this area. But then you have a lot coming from, you know, Venice, well, Patrick, Darlington. And so these type of, also, look at the income difference between that and the, the race. Two years ago too. Pete?
Sure.
Seventy-nine percent. Seventy-nine percent, just say, just throwing it out there. Higher than the race. Average spend. So if you want, if anyone wants it, just have them contact me and give me the dates, and I'll run it based on where they're at for events, so I'll be running.
So you go, you can go back two years?
So I'm going, I go back, actually go back. So, we're tracking, so I gave this to them, explaining where they went. And they use this for some grants. So uh, what we're doing is for all the, I'm gonna run every combination's grant, application for this. And we're showing where this.
Drag strip?
I've done for drag strip here, but I won't, I've seen no dates, if you do it on.
So that's where the um, Black Bikers used, drag strip.
Okay. I'll run it for that. And it seems like I can run it across that, I can do any location, um, so it's not just located specifically for Hartsville.
You can run, I mean, you can run for a year.
They don't do it every week, but again, but it's pretty much.
Yeah, sometimes, sometimes cars out there, trailers, and when I go to dawn, I wanna catch them alive.
I don't do the charging. Is it, is it representative? All right, uh, but if you have anybody who wants to send me a date, feel free to send it.
Anybody.
Okay, just randomly, you know.
Just let me know.
Yeah, they applied for um, some hospitality money, accommodation money several years ago. And um, because that was when they were under new ownership, but they said they were gonna have multiple P M. You know, twenty twenty-five, thirty years time.
I can check it.
They'd have to have a nonprofit though, to allocate. Well, we used to do a hospital.
Yeah, it has events for accommodations.
Right.
All right.
We're quick for you to move on, um.
Yep.
Make sure to see, um, not losing any money, hotel tax, I, I may have brought this up to you about a couple weeks ago.
You did, uh, we're gonna be looking into it.
Like uh, you know, prepared meals in the city that license.
Hotel.
Yeah, because I, I think some businesses don't, does not realize.
We, we have a conversation with, so most new restaurants and some of that, we talked to, this is two percent more prepared foods.
Yeah.
So it is not your money, it is, the city, the city council passed that, and so uh, we work with any business that needs assistance, and make sure.
So if someone, say, Ben doesn't realize that, I can say, okay, please call the city.
Absolutely, please do.
All right, get back.
Uh, and food trucks at the pan, um, brick and boards at the pan, it's all prepared.
Caters.
Caters. Caters.
Yeah, because I, I got um, jacked up about food trucks and probably around food trucks, which were not licensed to be in Hartsville.
They are.
And that they were taking brick and mortar businesses.
So good trucks, they, they just don't have.
So I said, no, I, well, they wouldn't show it to you, they didn't need to show to you. The only thing you need to see is that A, B, whatever they got, B, A, that, that was all you required to see.
So uh, we have food trucks, of course, I'm.
And I know that, but that was an assumption of an outside.
So as far as the city's concerned, um, food trucks and brick and boards pay relatively the same cost. Uh, except most of them actually do pay out of city business license, which is double.
And people are inside of the, whoever they want to eat.
Sure.
It's a remarkable jump in, in age tax revenue though.
Yeah, it's been steadily increasing as we, the restaurants open up.
Like the change in slope is.
Ever since COVID, really, I mean.
That's what I mean, it's like, it's not just since COVID, it's like, between last year and this year, it's, you know, an outsized increase.
I mean, yeah, cost factor into this, so when they're causing.
Yeah, and hard to go out, quick to eat, and like you.
I mean, but we will say this is not all inflation, this is growth as well.
We're, we're, we're tracking the progress.
Because that's what, I mean, for me, I mean, I know me personally, because of the more trips, I actually feel like I'm eating out less, right? So there has to be growth in that as well, people are actually a little bit tighter with their money too. So, it's too volatile.
All right, um, this is the last slide, we're gonna talk about a couple things before we finish up. So what they already know is on page one thirty-five in your budget book, or it starts on one thirty-four, but one thirty-five. The infrastructure fund, Fund Seven. Uh, this is the multi-county business park for um, the Walmart, multi-county business park, this is expired this year. We had a big conversation about extending it, possibly to the county, we ran the numbers, it's better for us to let it expire. Because we uh, thought the, the general pushback is, it was about, the money is frozen, remember, we get eighty percent of the revenue from the district for a period of, is it ten years? Three or four? It was ten years.
No, it was on the back, it was twenty-five.
Twenty-five, great, okay. So twenty-five years, so that's expired. So we're going from about eight hundred thousand dollars to three hundred thousand, and we think that that actually in the long run would be more beneficial to us than trying to push for another project, because that frees it up, it's just general tax money. The eight hundred thousand had to be spent through the district. So now we have three hundred thousand just general money that's coming to us. So that was one of our big pushes for the um, income, property taxes this year, was that going to general. Um, so and we do believe, uh, we were looking at doing another project on Fourth Street, we found another way to do it that doesn't require some multi-county business park. So we didn't feel the need to enter into another agreement with the county and have that money restricted.
And our debt rolls off, right, so if you look at it, you'll see down there that four hundred and sixteen thousand of that seven fifteen would go to the debt payment, right? So we're about to do our last payment on it, so it rolls off. So we were getting that money in general anyways, it was paying off the debt.
Yeah.
Um, so it was set up that way to, at the same time as the agreement, that's why when we did the refi a few years ago, this was not included in that, because we needed this to roll off at the same.
Yeah, also opens up the tax space for all the businesses that were involved in the.
It does.
To, to do more.
Right.
So that, that's where my question was.
Mm-hmm.
Um, we had a debt service increase in two thousand fourteen. And then.
For geodet. For geodet, the debt service?
I don't know what's, I just know it's on my tab.
That's right, that's right, that's geodet.
Okay, and so the one that we had, this last one that we had hooked up.
We actually did increase for that one, but when we did that geodet, that was for the buyer, they said buy that land.
Yeah.
To pay for the land for buying.
All right, so the city of Parks, the reassessment work team, um. Who was that? That was the city of Parks, but not the county?
The reassessment, that was done by the county.
Okay.
Yep.
You wanna cover any other funds for the.
We'll go over Fund Thirteen, I think you're done.
Yeah, and then we're gonna talk about what they want to.
Got it. You can go to page one fifty-one. That's the only one where we can get, we'll get. Yep, if y'all, this one is, like I just said, the geodet, our debt service mileage, no change to that. It's the same, y'all won't see any changes there. Paying off the geodet with that, and then we can continue to add on that based on our limits, and um, if it rolls off, then we would take that mileage off.
Uh, there's um, the hundred percent, state that same here in uh, in that table as well.
Yep. The hundred percent out there. Thank you. We can fix it.
What's that?
One fifty-one. That says one hundred, and the right column, you can see right there.
All right, I feel like y'all probably go with that, another fund I want to talk to about, um, if y'all can turn to page one thirty-three. So this was based off of feedback from our auditors, this is actually for um, the Fourth and Railroad Fund. And then we have a multi-county business park there, these are the revenues there, that need to start being budgeted. Y'all remember we created a multi-county business park for Fourth and Railroad, that agreement, um, and that one is set up um, different, the way the county does it, which is fine, but.
Yeah, so you did.
Thank, thank, okay, thank you. For some reason, we did do the formula down for those, I would definitely change that. Um, we're talking about, this is newly budgeted from all of yours, and this is definitely looking at the whole, why would you have to count this as part? So, um. And those five properties that you were talking about.
And it might not be five, it's five million, they, they do get really happy to pull that, this page, which was a lot of fact. This is their biggest confusion, because it showed up in both of them, and they said, once that one starts, then you can help to dispose of that.
So one thing I want to point out is that this is a fund, since this is a multi-county business park, it has to go towards infrastructure, there's limited, since this, we can be here, so the past year, she's gonna pull that balance for us right quick. This will be something when we come across with the right incentive that we want to do, or if there was something we want to do in that area, uh, within that district. Like I said, in the original multi-county business park agreement, it's defined what we can spend these funds for. So until we decide on that, council votes on it, we can see that, um, the chance to come up for that, um, this fund will just continue to grow, we don't touch that one. Yeah, right now it's sitting at one point five million, so we've just been, that's sitting there.
That was.
That's absolutely it, it was so that we could take our bond and so that we would be able to put an infrastructure out there, do whatever we needed to do, put the right developer. And it could be toward, used towards maintenance as well, to like save streets and ground, or like all of those type of things for that area, it could be utilized for future maintenance as well.
How about infrastructure for, long-term, Derek?
Absolutely, that would be something that y'all could consider. Yep, that is absolutely something you could consider for, there's a lot of uses for that, for infrastructure-wise, it's, it's sat there to be as an incentive for that. And then this is one too, that when it rolls off, then it comes back out, it'll go back to general fund, just like the other multi-county business park. When this expires that month, those tax revenues will go to general.
And the goal is to hope to develop it so that the tax revenues are more.
Absolutely, that's the goal.
That's the goal. Um, a couple things I, I did not mention in the beginning, um, do you have any other funds you want to run? Um, we did, uh, so contingency we have, it's back to your very beginning of the budget. Uh, this year we get a contingency of how much testing? What pay you're getting? I'm, I'm getting to.
I can, I can do that in, anyhow.
General, uh, four-ten?
Page, page twenty-three, it's in the part, um, contingency requested of fifty-six thousand.
Okay. Yeah. So we, originally we had about seventy or so, um, we upped PDRTA's contribution from fifteen to thirty this year, they had been, did a big push for it. Um, they are, they are lacking funding this year, I think they, it was just in the paper, about seven hundred thousand dollars they need. Uh, one of the fundings that is, is rolling off, that was a one-time grant from the Byerly Foundation, was for that um, on-demand bus that's been going around. Um, the one that says powered by Byerly, that one, that one is gonna go away, because they, they don't have continued funding for it. So, they are seeking it, the county did up theirs, I'm not sure exactly how much they up theirs, but a lot of the partners have up their contribution. So they came to us again, requested it, I think PDRTA is providing tremendous service for our residents, so we decided to double it this year. So I think at this point, it'd be a good opportunity to talk about anything else that we haven't covered, if you want to talk about it, we can also break for lunch. We still do have executive session we need to do, um, which should last about an hour or so, so it's up to you guys if you want to do. If you want to finish this up real quick and then go on to something else.
Well, I. I don't necessarily think we need to record the video of us eating lunch, so I was gonna say we could ask questions while we eat, but if we go ahead and get questions out of the way, then we get into recording, because then we only have executive session remaining.
Right, if you want to end it.
So if you have, give you your wish list or follow-up questions or anything, so go ahead and do that now.
Okay.
I'll consider contribution for, so, do you?
So I wanted to talk to you guys about that a little bit more, so uh, they do need one point nine million dollars, I actually think they need more. Um, because again, as they start to, when they start doing interior renovations, every, every cost has been higher than what they've just spent. So we have met, been meeting with their staff several times, Karen and I have, to discuss how they can get a sudden, you know, influx of cash to handle the project going forward. They are very proud of them being debt-free, which I think is commendable, however, I don't believe that they have enough money to finish it if they don't take out some debt. Uh, we recommended in the past that they, because it's a quasi-governmental agency, they have some borrowed capacity that other people don't, just like we do. And so we have recommended that they reach back out to Pope Flynn, uh, who assisted them the first time before it was stopped, to do a, uh, bond. That's just my recommendation, because overall, they can turn that one point nine, or the, whatever money they have left, and really um, get this project done. That's the only way I see them getting, they're not gonna get their appropriations, in my opinion. Uh, or it's gonna be difficult, put it that way, not, never say never. Um, but it's gonna be difficult, they're also, it's gonna be difficult, USDA grant is actually that appropriation, because that's what we chaired with, so they competed two different things, but that is, that's the same thing. And then um, there's not a grant that's gonna pay one point nine to do the entire project.
I have a question, is there a possibility that locally we could do like a penny tax? City of.
Well, they already have tax, they have, they have two bills.
They're, they're special purpose.
They're special, they have, uh, the Hartsville District Township is actually bigger than the city limits, so they have two bills already designated to it.
They need to prove additional bills.
Okay, well, I mean, like uh, for sales around the city, like Walmart or any stores.
Can we do one percent to help fund it?
Yeah, that's a county thing.
That's a county thing, and then they, they themselves can increase their mileage, so they have a couple options.
I mean, it'd be a temporary thing.
Well, so here's what I, what we suggested to them, is they already have mileage assigned, they need to assign capital mileage for a period of time, temporary thing to pay for the debt.
Yeah.
They, they, but this, they need to get the group board members on, and they need to find a way to, using the tools they have available, that they've had available this entire time, to get the money they need. As a donation, because they, they've raised one point five or six, but they need another one point nine, almost two, probably four.
Yeah, but it's, it makes it out of.
Well, you see the list, they've already made significant contributions, Byerly's given half a million, the state did half a million, Sunoco did talk about some money. The city has given them money, uh, through accommodations for different projects, I mean, it's, how much is it in total? They apply almost every year.
They're not putting heads and beds, and that's just to close.
Well, that, that's been the problem, so last year they applied for money and they don't have any, they can't put any heads and beds with the clothes, so the accommodations denied.
So.
Right, so you can mean the capital name, they can go back to the county, so okay.
They don't even have to go to the county, I mean, they're.
As a commission.
As a commission.
They have, they have tax in it for it.
They're a special purpose district.
First, they, they receive tax money, taxes on.
So they can add mileage.
Yeah, but they should add, just for a while.
So I, what we mentioned to him on Friday is that if um, if he could get the commission on board for it.
Yeah.
They could take the debt out for one point nine million and just, let's get this thing done, and they would just add the capital mileage. Like we did similarly, the county actually did that for capital mileage for the fire district, for the fire truck we just got. So they could just add that capital mileage and pay it back with that.
Yeah.
And that was my recommendation to him, and that is why we said Pope Flynn, someone that can say it much prettier than me.
Yeah.
And explain it to them what it would look like, would be advantageous once his new commission members are on.
Yeah, that's true, I, I mean, when, when was that in Oklahoma, that, it's, it's a good two and a desert, we raised, did, uh, one percent tax, they're like, what?
I mean, loo- look at this, we just, we spent two point two million dollars last year on capital lease, we put it to debt.
Yeah.
Because it's the best way to maximize your money, and so.
Because we, they can get loans at such a low interest rate.
Right.
Yeah. And here's the thing, is, and this is what Mark would explain to them too, when it is something like essentially the building, it is something that is not very risk-worthy. That is why investors like it, because it's not a big risk for them, they're going to get the money back. And they have capital mileage that is going to pay for it, you have a guaranteed revenue source to pay for it. Um, they really need to get their commission on board.
Well, as they explained, their finances, o- of their entire revenue stream, I think ninety, or eighty-six percent was from that tax mileage, only fourteen percent was from actual shows. So imagine if they flipped that, and the show revenue pays for everything. So imagine if they flipped that, and the show revenue pays for everything to run it, and then your tax millage pays for your debt. It's the way it should work. They, they have, and most private theaters don't even have that dedicated millage to handle this, they have dedicated revenue going in, but they use that for operations alone. So, we recommended this four years ago, and so we, we think, so to answer your question, you could throw money at it. But there's a solution that is out there that could be done.
Yeah.
Right now, and so, and that's where it's like, we have donated our time, if you wanna go from there, and we will absolutely stay on and consult with anything we can, but this is something that will solve the situation.
And I did speak to him as how we handled it with the Humane Society, y'all remember, we were the very last stretch of that. And I told them I felt like coming to us when you were at that last, sixty thousand for the kennels, right there at that finish line, I told them I felt like that would be a good opportunity to come back.
That's what I'm saying, when they come to the point where they've secured the funding.
Correct, and I told him that on Friday.
The money will get, the money from different entities will come, but that would be another chandelier, you know what I mean, it's something to, to add on.
And it would be a known cost in a line item that.
Absolutely.
That they have their construction plan, but then you say, okay, this is, this is how the city wants to participate.
But, and, and.
Not just.
Yeah.
You know, on, I wish, um, because that, I, I have some points from Councilman, uh, Hunger Pillar, Center Theater was one of them. Uh, his wishlist also included similar, just, uh, if, if there's anything that Ms. Traver needs with the Eagle Scout project, he wanted that, us to consider that, um, just to get her across the finish line. And he was also interested if we needed to set aside some money for street skating, um, for, if perhaps it was something that the tap wouldn't cover.
Well, we.
I mean, I know that's hypothetical, but this.
No, that's fine, um, so for Ms. Traver, we, we did the same thing.
Yeah.
I challenged her, said, tell me, what do you need to finish? And so, um, I, I haven't gotten that number yet, we are planning a ribbon, a ground breaking, or ribbon cutting, in the next, by the nineteenth, you're almost done.
Nineteen or twenty.
And now, when we're writing, we're writing.
So that's the question, is, do they need anything more? Now, we are accepting that as maintenance for us, so going forward, we will be spending money on this stage, and that was the conversation from the very beginning. If any improvements have been made after she builds the show, or it's done, something comes up, we, it's our responsibility, so we will be investing in this stage. Um, to, for, the other one for Fourth Street, so, again, we did submit our letter of intent for the tap, um, grant for Fourth Street, it's about four million dollars. Our, our match is twenty percent, we requested another ten percent in assistance from, um, S C D O T. We also could then split that ten percent that's remaining, C T C can assist us, uh, Foundation can assist us if we want, or we can cover it, so. Ten percent of four, uh, four million dollars is four hundred thousand dollars, but that can be then also phased in. So let's say the first of that four to eight year period for it to be built and be done, the first phase could actually just be the engineering, which might be a million of that. So our contribution will be a hundred thousand, so once, it sounds like we're gonna be doing our application this month. If they give it back to us, the only holdup it seems like is gonna be our ability to create the match, but it sounds like we can't do that very well, so. That includes landscaping.
Okay, that's your question, I mean, I can't speak foreign, but, yeah, that, that, you, obviously you've got something specific in mind for that, that's all I'm gonna do.
We went from two point five or six million, without the street squid and lighting improvements, to about one point four, that is just landscaping and street and lighting.
You're best made it.
And absolutely, it's not a finished product.
And that's something that I would recommend, if it gets passed, wherever, we're coming back to council that point, and getting that approval for that, I wouldn't. Local budget with that one, right? And also, we were talking about it, we talked about Fourth and Railroad, there might be a portion of that I can utilize towards that as well, because it's going to be, it's gonna be in that area.
We also have, um, so, ARCA funding, we have obligated all the funding, but we are seeing some stuff come in under budget. So we have been looking through it, if we can assign it to the similar, uh, obligation, within the, the criteria of the obligation, we might be able to just use that money from that too. So we still have leftover money from that as well, in the Fourth and Railroad area, so, we have pots of money to pay for this four hundred thousand dollar match, should we be awarded. Um, and so I think it's, uh, it sounds all very positive, and we're gonna be hearing about this very soon, so, we will have all that.
Well, for, as for mine, it's, most of the stuff, you know, about, that we've talked about the last couple of months, is literally a couple thousand dollars. The only significant one on my wishlist was a, um, to replace the stage with something more manageable. In the hopes that we could provide it to, to rent, um, to go to the public as well, we have to talk about that in a couple of years.
We have it, this, the stage, um, for all you.
Heart boys, I can.
Colin, I mean, Colin and Brian were the newbies, um, the stage, we had a conversation right before we got on to buy a new one. The main issue with the stage is pulling it and staffing it.
Oh, stack.
And the issue we ran into when we were renting it, is that they would rent it like, for instance, for New Year's party, and so our staff would have to work it. And then pick it up at three in the morning in the dark, because the party would end, and then it takes time to do it.
Well, my, my answer to that would be just don't do that.
Well, so we did, so that was the first answer.
Oh, but then, but then it gets bigger, it upset, you're upsetting a lot of people, right? So then you're telling people, yes, uh.
The stage that they were for rent within these bringers, yeah.
But then like, I think the Goldberg school needed one time, that we had it put up the night before.
Yeah.
It is.
It's a little.
But, but specifically, a stage that gets easier to move around.
So, so that, so the next part was that, okay, well, right now we can only pull the stage for a dump truck.
Yeah.
Yep.
So, cause it's that heavy, um, maybe an M R B we can get it. Um, but, we then went to, um, looking at stages that were self-contained, that you only need like a rider, like it's be like a rider truck, that opened up to do it. The cost, three years ago, was about a hundred thousand or two hundred thousand dollars. Right now, the stage is working for what we need it for, and we just set it up at, we, we do set up at, um, at Murray, but that might not be needed anymore, cause we have the stage that, that the Travers donated. And then we only set up for downtown block bridges. Um, the stage is not in any shape to do it, so, to rent out, it's current state, so if we got a new one, I would wanna do one that you wouldn't need a C D O to drive.
Absolutely.
And then, I would rent out and just let them pick it up.
That's good, that's, that's a cool, I'm thinking addition, it'd be something you could pull with a regular pickup. Um, because I've, throughout this time, I've constantly got questions, so, can we rent the city stage for this, can we rent the city stage, I've talked about community admitted.
Sure.
Um, so the demand is there, and I think it helps, like, having those things happen in Harpsville makes the community more festive, if we can provide that. I just wanted to go it out there for consideration. Um, but don't, you know, definitely, specifically make sure that it can be moved around with a regular vehicle, and we can talk about how to limit the stacking department, so that it's not such a burden.
Well, I think too, we get into overtime with that, so the fee that we need to charge to actually try to cover it.
Of course.
Right?
Well, I want the one that someone can just pick up, and then drive it away from us.
That sounds, I don't, I don't know how you would approve someone driving something large.
That's the insurance.
There is no way I'm doing that.
Well, then, then no, I don't wanna do it.
No, 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 it, it would have to be our staff doing that, and I mean.
They're on the smurf board.
Yeah, you shouldn't know that, we can't sell it, we just drive it.
I did, that was my four point comment, I heard this.
Yeah, I think, I think, I really, it was, it was pocketable when we were renting it out, uh, but staffing it, I felt like, even in the brief time that you and I had to deal with it, it was constant phone calls.
It was, we were, we had.
Oh, no. Right, they wanted to flip the question, I think.
Some solution is to maybe get your C D O and drive it.
It sounds like you got a new business opportunity here.
I told a lot of people that shit, you know, it's so bad. If we, if we could not be able to live with our city, I'm like, making it a lot easier, so then, Michelle and her staff can be able to drive it, I can drive it, it may be easier.
I think, I'm true.
You know, they had a lot of that, and I greatly drive it.
Very good.
And the other thing that we have talked about, that is, uh, non-trivial expense, is some sort of. Ticket, issued ticketing system, where a citizen or business owner or something has a problem or a question, it's one central place to go. Um, where you say, you know, this is, I wanna report a pothole, or, uh, literally anything, and then that would come in to someone on staff, and it would go to the right department and answer their questions. Um, we used to have something like that, and I, I just wanna kind of like, when someone says, who do I call about this, you have one central place to go to this thing, whether it's an app, or a page on the website, or something, and submit you.
I would like an app, if we were to do that route, so that would.
Ultimately, yeah, um, so I'd really like to bring that functionality back in some form.
And that'd be a secret, so we could get quotes for a secret, have a secret fix type situation.
And we do need to check the grant if it's.
We won't, we won't drop that, but our Facebook.
Literally, get them all, yes, absolutely.
Cause people have called us on Facebook or text, or messaged on Facebook asking.
They are still gonna do that too, but I agree, we need to have something sent to them.
Yeah.
But the first thing, and I mentioned, we talked about the Jersey trade, was reaching out to grant if it's.
Yeah, see what they, see what quality they are.
See what they have.
So it could be value in integrated.
If we could find the, the cost for that, within the fifty thousand, would that be kind of acceptable? We might not have it for next week, we won't have it next week.
With this grant, if you might.
We might get a quote for that, okay, we'll work on that today.
I bet, anybody, any, any of the sales teams that would be more than happy to provide you what you need, bring those products.
Well, we'd still get, of course, I think we get it for a second week, that's what I'm saying.
And, and one thing I'd like to see is, um, codes, no law, cause when I go look at something, and I'm saying, oh, good God, that's twenty-ten.
Yeah.
You know, something has been changed, or this is something that's been there, but nobody seems to know it's there.
We will, so, another thing that we have not, didn't include in the budget, but we, um, need to talk about, particularly, we're bringing harbor funds on it, is that, so, talk about our zoning code. We have our zoning code, and we did get a quote from the same group who did it, but it was, um, it was including another type of, another, like almost a master plan two point O, another repeat of that, with multiple meetings. We don't need that, uh, but we are looking at what the cost would be to do that. It's gonna be, it's still a cost, so we're in the, you know, fifty to a hundred thousand dollar range, that's something we desperately need to make our codes work better for us, but I think what you're talking, reading about codes and forth, just to go. Now that we have, um, the time, and you've been, uh, in the seat for a while, too, um, we have some opportunities to do some improvements. So, we'll be doing that from the staffing side, from operations side, not necessarily the budget side, to fix it. Anything else specific to the budget before we return and have lunch?
Before we close, instead of getting back to Center Theater, is the money, the figures, what scares them as far as signing the line, cause even then, admitting, they're not gonna get that kind of money, that from the private sector.
I don't know, uh, I think, I think there was a big push to not take on any debt, because debt scares a lot of people. Um, and that's why, you know, again, it's commendable, only if you raise that much money.
They don't, it's gonna be two or three more years for them.
And we told them that on Friday.
Yeah, I think.
I, I, I told them very honestly that, I've been on Friday.
Yeah.
That I don't see how y'all could get it open without taking out some type of debt to, to get you through.
Yeah, we've said it will never open, so.
Right.
I think, based on what you said, I think y'all gave them the best solution, we, I like what I love about this.
And if they, if they take that step and do that, and people see that, that they're, they're, put some skin in the game.
I think they'll have more money coming in than that.
And they'll, they'll have more opportunity closer to the end, the other people will wanna join as well, I mean, they got to say you put some skin in the game.
So, my research, she, you have your, if they say, if they did wanna sign the line, and instead of us just giving a monetary, we could maybe find something like a, just say the chandelier or whatever.
Sure.
We could say, okay, we'll give fifty or a hundred thousand dollars for that, and you can scratch that off the list, and then we would have, somebody say, well, the City of Harpsville donated this, rather than just a hundred thousand against a two billion dollar debt.
No, I, so you'll, I think we, we've had this conversation, just about, not like many times, but about different entities requesting money. We, we need to be able to account for that money when it leaves us, see if it'll go somewhere else, so first putting taxpayer dollars has to be for a thing, or a tangible thing that we know is gonna spend. That's why, when you throw money into a pot that's gonna be years down the road, there's no telling what that could be used for. And it's not, it's, it's nothing against anyone, I'm talking about, talking about anyone's, you know, manage, mismanaging money or anything like that, I'm just saying that, when we have a thing we can fund, that is a conversation that is, I think, appropriate for city council to have. Not just to fund an effort, cause if you fund an effort, there's a risk of that effort turning south.
Yeah.
It not happening, then we have to ask for the money back, because it wasn't spent for, we just had it happen with a FEMA trailer, if you recall them. So, you have to have a thing, so the minute they secure the funding, and they need something like you to say, that's when I would say city council needs to come back and spend the money, and I would absolutely recommend we do that, to contribute to this project. But it has to be done, I think what you have the new commissioners come up to, that will be really transformative to assist Ben in what he's been doing, cause he's been doing this all by himself.
Well, too, getting Jerry, Chee, and Linda Weatherford are well-versed in dealing with big acquisitions and debt and things like that, that, they're not, I think that, and I told them that on Friday too, getting both of them, since I worked with Jerry briefly, it's now going extremely, really, to the finals.
I think that's scary, that, you have, right now.
That won't scare them, I really think getting those on is gonna be great for them, and I hope they'll help push it through, they need it.
Yeah, I, I didn't, I didn't figure, prove their voice, yeah.
Yes.
They just, they, they're just, well, you know, signatures to the government.
Right, and, uh, by itself, you know.
Cause if they were to sign the line, they might go up by January one.
And they already have things booked for.
Yeah.
For March.
And that's not good, but I don't understand what you're saying, but book it too.
Yeah, no.
Well, they gotta get, they, they did say, I mean, I, I don't want to steal their thunder, they, they have the return of different things that used to be there, so I don't wanna steal their thunder.
Okay, all right, well, I say, if we don't adjourn, we go into recess for lunch, and we'll finish up the executive session whenever we're ready.
Sounds like fun.
So we, all right, now recess, thank you everybody. So. Well, I'll call us back to order after a brief recess, um, but now we just literally need to enter executive session on camera. Um, so, I would entertain a motion to enter executive session pursuant to S C Code Forty, Section thirty-four seventy-eight two-five, for discussion on negotiations incident. To propose contractual agreements for the transfer of property, negotiations, and potential sale and potential purchase of property, matters related to potential developments, one, for an economic development opportunity, and another for the potential expansion of services. Motion to add, second, any discussion before we take a vote, all those in favor of entering executive session, uh, per the motion to enter executive session pursuant to S C Code Forty, Section thirty-four seventy-eight two-five, for discussion negotiations, incident to propose contractual agreements for the transfer of property, negotiations, and potential sale and potential purchase of property, matters related to potential developments, one, for an economic development opportunity, and another for the potential expansion of services, please indicate someone saying hi.
Hi.
Is anyone opposed? The ayes have it, ladies and gentlemen, we now stand in executive session, thank you very much.